Please to the town of Buena Vista. Can I have a roll call, please?
Mayor Lacy.
Here.
Let's see, pay.
Hi, Bert.
Here.
Row.
Here.
Let's see Swisher.
Here.
Yep.
Will you all please rise and join me in the pledge of allegiance? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. To the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you all very much for coming tonight. I please remind you to turn off or silence your cellphone, please. Before us, we have the agenda. We have agenda adoption. Are there any additions, changes to the agenda? Would entertain a motion?
No moves.
Second.
Second vote. Further discussion? One favor say aye.
Aye.
Post. Motion passes. Thank you very much. Next item is consent agenda. Are there any comments or questions on the consent agenda? Or items you would like to point out? I will point out the adoption of resolution number thirty-six, resolution of board of trustees for the town of Buena Vista. Appointing Andrew. Oh, sure, I had to. Okay, well, we appreciate you, Andy. Alternate member of the airport advisory board. Always welcome to people on our advisory board. Do there any other comments? I wouldn't entertain a motion.
So moved. We've got the consent agenda.
Second say. Further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Host. Thank you all very much. Motion passes. Thank you, Paula. Next item is public comment. And what we will do is go through our written list here first Philip.
Okay.
And we will see what's on in the chat, stuff like that. Okay, sounds good. I will give you the option, for those of you who are here for short-term rental, you may speak now. Or you can wait until we open the public hearing for short-term rentals and you can speak at that point in time. So I will call your name and you can let me know which way you want to go. It's totally up to you. First on the list is Karen Dills. And Karen, if you'll state your name and you name an address and you do have three minutes to speak.
Karen Dills, two nine nine four zero, County Road, three five three east. First, thank you for your efforts for helping to keep Buena Vista this special place and a safe place that I've been here for over forty-five years and appreciate. I'd like to thank Phil and Mark and Earl for their collaborative efforts to help our town have its own Boys and Girls Club building. For over twenty years, I've worked with folks to try to get a safe, educational, fun place for our youth to go after school and during the summers. For the fifteen years that Boys and Girls Club has been here, we've worked with our school district to cooperate and try to have a positive place for our kids to go utilizing the elementary school. The spaces have worked for the most part, but the availability has continually been reduced. Worked most of the time, but with the growth in families that we are seeing and the stress on the elementary school, I think it's now vital for us to work towards having our own place to better enhance the lives of the next generations. Such a building could provide better areas for our character building, healthy living and fitness programs. Our programming serves our mission to enable all children to reach their full potential to become caring, productive, responsible citizens. One of the things that attracted me to Boys and Girls Club is the opportunity that kids have to interact with kids of different ages and different socioeconomic groups. In school, they're pretty much stuck with kids their own age. They also get to interact and have programming with kids who've lived all over the world. Older kids get to mentor younger ones. So that's a, that's a big draw, I think, for this organization. I hope you will support the letter of intent between the club and the town. On another issue, I was just walked the trail by the town water gallery met out north of the water towers and the field is infested with Canadian thistle. I know there are some treatments that could be used and you can use them near water. So I hope someone will look at that. Thanks again for all your work.
You Karen? Next on the list is Clark Hess. The wait. Thank you, Clark. Linda Barbeau. Okay. Chris Sattlemen. Okay. J.J. Kin's father. Somebody signed him in. All right, J.J., you're wait. Trish Confer. Thank you. Les Quilco. Thank you. Craig Pfeifer. Jackie Cole. Thank you. Who signed after Jackie? I can't read it. Anybody doesn't know? I'm going to say right, Robin, number ten, two. Thank you. You'll wait. You go ahead and speak. Thank you. Please state your name and address, please, and you have three minutes.
Yes. My name is Robin Vega and I live at five eighteen Cedar Street in Buena Vista, Colorado. Um, yeah, thank you for allowing me to speak. I came tonight really to fact find to see how these forums are, how they go. I've been to the Chaffey County ones, but not ever to a town. So I kind of wanted to just see the layout and how it went, but I also just wanted to voice a concern of mine as a business owner. We just bought a home with the contingency of short-term renting one of the units on the property. It will greatly impact our business if we're not allowed to do that. It's Culture and Music Academy and we just got the opportunity to buy a property and expand into two classrooms instead of one, which will allow us to serve more students almost immediately. So the apartment can't be a long-term rental for that, for that reason. We need to utilize it as a classroom during the day. And then on the weekends, our, our plan was to help subsidize our mortgage by, by short-term renting it. Also allowing for artists and teacher accommodations. We host music workshops and master classes, having somewhere for these teachers to stay. So it's a concern of mine. I, I understand, you know, making decisions for the greater good of the community. As a business owner, I, I own two businesses in town, Culture and Music Academy and Cosmetic CBD Spa and Store. And staffing is difficult, so I, I understand the need for long-term affordable housing. But I, I think as a community, also working with the EDC, we can come up with long-term solutions without negatively impacting business owners here. If you might be using a short-term rental to subsidize their income in low seasons or just utilizing it as income for retirement play. So I get, I get the need to have a, a community discussion about it. I would just hope that we can not knee jerk any, any outcomes or solutions, but, but work together and, and pull business owners and, and locals just to make sure it's not going to negatively impact, impact those, those folks. They, business owners need to feel supported and, and they're employing people helping to build economic resilience in a, in a town. It's not always, it's not always easy. So I would say I would just hope that we could come up with a solution that is beneficial to the greater good and then also really keeping in mind locals and, and business owners who might be meeting short-term rentals as an additional income. I think that's all I got for now.
Okay.
Thank you, Robin. Thank you, Karen. We will also look at our Zoom chat box. For those listening in, you can press your phone star nine and the meeting will prompt you to unmute. You can raise your hand in the chat box. Do you wish to make a comment?
Yeah, Mayor, right now I have three people listed that wish to speak. I have Carly Linky, Christine Sterling and Jacob Mueller.
Who was the second one, Philip?
Christine. Sterling.
Okay, we'll start with, I believe he said Carly Linky first. Carly, would you like to speak now or do you want to wait until the public hearing?
I can speak now. Or now, let's wait until the public hearing. I'm sorry. Wait until the public hearing.
Okay.
Thank you.
Second you said was Christie.
Christine, yeah.
Christine.
Sorry. Yeah, Christine commented that she is just listening for now. So Jacob Mueller would be next.
Jacob Mueller. Jacob, would you like to speak now or are you speaking on the flags or the short-term rental?
I can wait to speak. I'll be speaking about the short-term rentals.
Okay, thank you very much. I think that's all I see. Do you see anybody else?
Let's see.
Okay. Great. First item on the agenda, business item. First business item on the agenda is the trustee appointment. The board will consider an appointment to fill the vacancy on the board of trustees. We all heard the presentation. Philip, do you have any further comment?
So yes, this evening, the board had a work session where they heard from three candidates to applying for the vacant trustee position and went through a scoring exercise, if you will. And so, yeah, this, at this point, this is the opportunity for the board to take in a official action to appoint someone into that position. This person would complete the term through April twenty twenty-two, which is the next election. And then that position would be up for reelection or for, for election. So yeah, I'll turn it over to you, Mayor, if you want to.
Thank you very much.
Motion?
Board, we would entertain a motion for that appointment. It is actually an open motion.
I'll make a motion to appoint Matthew Snow to fill the vacant seat board of trustees.
Okay, we have a motion on the table.
I'll second it.
That's second say. Further discussion? Roll call vote, please.
Trustee Faye.
Yes.
Trustee Nyberg.
Yes.
Trustee Row.
No.
Trustee Swisher. Trustee Bopie.
No.
We have a three-two vote. Did we have a motion on the table? If there is one.
The motion to appoint Gina LaCrazy, LaCrazy. The board of trustees.
Okay, we have a motion on the table.
I'll second that.
Okay. Further discussion? Roll call vote, please.
Trustee Faye.
Yes.
Trustee Nyberg.
Yes.
I'm sorry. Trustee Nyberg.
Yes.
Trustee Row.
Yes.
Trustee Swisher.
Yes.
Trustee Bopie.
Yes.
Okay, unanimous decision. Thank you all very much. And thank you Gina for stepping in the ring. What a night. What a night you picked. So if you'd like to go ahead and join us, I believe Philip, you set up.
Yep, Paula will do the oath of office.
Good afternoon.
Okay.
I, Gina LaCuzzi, do affirm.
I, Gina LaCuzzi, do affirm.
That I support the Constitution of the United States.
I support the Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the state of Colorado.
Constitution of the state of Colorado.
The laws of the Colorado.
The laws of the state of Colorado.
The ordinance of the town of Buena Vista.
The ordinance of the town of Buena Vista.
And will faithfully perform the duties of the Office of Trustee.
Me, do the duties of the Office of Trustee.
Upon which I'm about to enter to the best of my ability.
About, to about, sorry.
Which I'm about to enter.
Which I'm about to enter.
Do the best of my.
The best of my.
Your signature here and here.
Thank you all very much. Next item on the agenda is a Boys and Girls Club Letter of Intent to lease property to the, for a new facility. Executive directors, we have a numerous amount of names on here. I don't know if they're all here or not. But the board will discuss this. We have a letter in front of us. Philip?
Let me share here. So in your packet and, and the decision before you tonight is a letter of intent. This is a, a project that we've been working on for, oh, probably six, six to eight months now. And what we're looking at is partnering with the Boys and Girls Club on a new in town to, to serve their functions as an organization, but also looking at the opportunity to utilize town property to do a ground lease so that we can accomplish some of the things we need from a recreation, town recreation space, so indoor rec space, which, which we've recognized for a while is, is something that's a growing desire and need in our community. So the letter of intent in your packet tonight outlines the intent for both organizations, the town and the Boys and Girls Club to proceed forward in good faith, looking at the specific parcel, which, which will be discussed here tonight. And move forward towards a ground lease. And at that time, that's, that's really when the binding language will be in effect. So looking at the terms and conditions of that, one of the things that it's already been discussed, but will need to be laid out more for the actual lease agreement is how we will mutually use the facility once, once it's up and going because we have some specific recreation needs and they need to align with the operations for the Boys and Girls Club. But staff is very excited and supportive of this opportunity because building a new facility is very, very challenging, very expensive. And so this opportunity to partner together as Karen discussed in public comment, really is an opportunity for, for community benefit. So tonight we have a few members, I believe, from Boys and Girls Club who will share with you an update on the site and where that project's headed. So good opportunity for you to ask questions if you have any at this moment. Again, following that, what we're really looking forward for tonight is approval of the letter of intent and direction to sign that. So that's what we'll come back to as a business item. So with that, I will let Dustin, Brian, you guys coming up? Awesome.
Well, thank you so much for the opportunity to be here and present to you. And thank you, Town Administration, Mr. Philip Pocket and Mark Doring and Earl Richmond for all the work and hours that went into kind of refining this concept that we're going to show you here tonight, this place, this location that we're very excited about and really think will meet the needs of the Boys and Girls Club and Town Rec Department. So we can move to the next slide. So you can see, so first of all, I'm Dustin Nichols, facilities chair of the Boys and Girls. And I'm primarily the. Yeah. So now, as you can see here, we've got Jeff Irvin, a STG architects, and he's had a few meetings, not only with children, but some community members. And this is just a good representation of some of the activities that we went through to bring in the children. They're our constituents. They're the ones that are going to benefit the working families and these kids from a facility like this. So we brought them in early. We got their ideas. We incorporated them into the plan that we're going to show you here tonight. So we'll do the next slide. This is the location we're looking at, and this is somewhat microscopic and hard to see, but essentially it's this lot right here next to us with the skate pad on it. You can see Avery Parsons with the yellow arrow there. And then inside the oval is where the old skate park used to be directly to the west of this community center.
We can move to the next slide. All right, thank you. Let me get this shared. Thank you, Mark. All right.
This is just another rendering that our architect did for us. You can see Avery Parsons down there in the bottom. Main street, and then there's the building. Now, that's not an architectural drawing. That's more of a massing just to get an understanding of shape and form and how it all comes together. Here's a little bit more of a close-up of that. So this would be looking, you know, towards the west of kind of the front of the building, if you will, with that is a parking lot there in front. Those are little trees that look like gum drops, if you will. And then we can kind of go on to the next slide. Here's another representation of what we're looking at doing. We've got a parking lot that provides some greenery and ample space for a bus to turn around and drop off kids and pick up kids. Got, you come in and proceed into the facility. And we go to the next slide. So this gives a little bit more of a floor plan outline. And so as Philip mentioned, we are looking to partner with Town Rec and this gym structure would be really important to not only meet the needs of the Boys and Girls Club, but of Town Rec with some of their programming needs currently have. It's not very clear on this photograph, but there is an upper upstairs of this building. There will be a walking track on the top of that gymnasium area and an elevator that would get folks up there, a bike place to walk in the wintertime. That little green space there is a, it's a light court that kind of came out on that first slide. One of the children actually drew a little green box inside of this drawing and wanted some sort of a light court type attribute. And we were able to accomplish that. And so there would be, we hope to have some sort of in there and just let light into the building, have perhaps a rock climbing wall for the kids to enjoy. There. And then we also looked to add quite a bit of extra storage. And it's, of course, you can't really read the fine print on this image, but there's one, two, three places where we can have separate storage to meet Town Rec's storage needs and be the facility Boys and Girls Club needs. We'd have a kind of that bottom quadrant here where that little purple space is over here to the side. That's theater area where you could have outdoor theater and that sort of thing. Kids could put together and whatnot as well. So this is a pretty good representation. It's just a place where kids can be educated, where they can play, where they can be nourished and supported and, and gather and just. So we can move to the next slide. This is just kind of broadening out a little bit more. So we just want to say thank you so much. You can, yeah, thank you so much for this opportunity. And like I said, I've never had the opportunity to work with such professional staff when it comes to town or county for that matter. So I just want to say thank you for that experience and we appreciate your consideration tonight and look forward to. It'll, I would say next steps. He already lined out next steps, but if the LOI is approved, then we would be looking to move into that ground lease with town, which would be a, a more binding agreement. This would be a non-binding agreement for both the club and town. Thank you again. Anything you'd like to add, Brian?
Yeah, just repeating, our great crew just require great partners and we've had a lot of fun working with Mark and Philip and and Earl and more will come. This is very much in the concept stage. So we want to know everybody in the community. As Dustin often says, as our architect says, we really want everyone's fingerprint to be, feel like it's, it's part of the community. It's a community resource and we just had our back-to-school night, thanks to Lisa and Emily over at Emily's School and thanks to Norm. We were flooded with kids. So I feel like we want to meet the future and build a building that will, again, the entire town can be proud of and that we can mostly alleviate the, some of their needs in terms of rec, but certainly Boys and Girls Club to assist working families be a vital part of this community with a building like this, hundred or more years. So again, just a concept at this point. We're welcome, we're going to be welcoming community feedback later this fall. So we'll make sure everyone's aware of that, but certainly willing to and open to taking any questions at this point of the process.
Trustees, questions? Comments?
It looks amazing.
Browns. How far, how, and I know we had this concept presented to us. Does, how differ, how does this differ than what we saw or how does it align with what we saw?
Yeah, good, good question. So you might be referring to the location, specifically to the location. So yes, we, when we started this discussion, we were looking at the town-owned property. Let's see, east of Avery Parsons, north of Newby's location out in that area and a, a good piece of property, but certainly some, some significant challenges when it comes to infrastructure. There is no infrastructure. So getting extension of the sewer, water lines, street access, all of that was a significant line item on, on the, on the budget for this kind of project. So as the town was working on the, what we're now calling the town campus here, this whole block, one of the things that came forward out of that was the need for some more indoor rec space to expand our rec programming. And so at that moment, it really kind of clicked and the, the concept for the town campus had an illustration for a rec center of sorts in that area. And so that's when we made the connection and, and started looking at, will, will it fit there? Is it viable there? So it certainly seems to still fit the original mission in this location. Plus, having access to the, the infrastructure that's already in place around it will save a lot of money on the project. We, we feel it's still close enough to Avery Parsons to be viable for Boys and Girls Club. And then obviously with our rec team here at the community center, it's a good connection to that facility.
Would, and, and obviously this is, a lot of this is down the road. Would the rec department move into that building or would they still exist?
They would still, they would still have office space here, but there is planned storage, quite a bit of storage in that facility for equipment and things.
And I, and I know that was a, let's say, a major part of that campus rendition that we saw was having that rec area there and along with more facilities for the town, but was very nice, very big. Questions? Other questions, comments?
So would we, eventually the idea would be to transition from Darren Patterson to use that facility?
That's a good question. We have a, we have a tremendous partnership situation here with Darren Patterson, also with our BB school district to use their gym spaces. We don't necessarily see that changing. We wouldn't necessarily stop using those. We have a lot of programming needs and they're, they're growing. So we actually see it combining with our current structure, utilizing Darren Patterson and the school district.
Okay.
Other questions?
I think it's great. You know, I've been a fan of the Boys and Girls Club for a long time. I worked for them when I was in college and great organization. And it sounds great.
So what we're looking forward to seeing, motion?
I would like to make a motion that we approve the letter of intent to the lease of the southwest portion of parcel R three two seven one zero nine three two five zero two four.
Very good.
You killed it.
I tripped.
We have a second say, further discussion? Roll call vote, please.
Trustee Faye.
Yes.
Trustee LaCuzzi.
Yes.
Trustee Nyberg.
Yes.
Trustee Row.
Yes.
Trustee Swisher.
Yes.
Trustee Bopie.
Yes. Thank you all very much and.
Thank you.
Thank you, Boys and Girls Club. Let's make this one work. Let's make it work.
Starting to raise the money.
Starting to raise the money, Brian?
There you go. There you go. Next item on the agenda is a public hearing on flag and signs ordinance. The here's public hearing is on an adoption of ordinance number 10, series 2021 entitled in ordinance amending the sign code provisions in chapter 16 concerning yard signs during election season and flags. Philip, are you starting that?
I will turn this over to Mark.
Thank you.
On page sixty four, your packet is the staff report for the proposed amendments to, to the ordinance dealing with the sign code. We also to try and simplify in an attachment on page sixty seven that lists all the signs that you don't need a sign permit for. So one of the things we heard from the planning commission was it was hard to read all the ordinance language without necessarily understanding the context. So we provided an attachment A in the staff report on page sixty seven. The section of the sign code that deals with signs that do not need sign permits. So you can see all those things that we don't want to get a sign permit for. In that section are several signs, but two of which that we're looking at amending language that relate to this ordinance before you tonight. Deal with flags and deal with yard signs. So the proposed ordinance changes the amount of allowed flags without a sign permit on any property in town from two currently to three as proposed. And yard sites changing the amount of yard sites that are allowed from two to five. This came out of our experience with the last election cycle, there was a lot of issues and a lot of candidates. So trying to allow for the ability for people to provide their their opinion on a particular matter or a particular candidate as well as to allow for additional signs because, additional flags because early we have a lot of people that will fly the state flag and the US flag. And this gives the building for one more flag as well. So we did take the planning and zoning commission on July seventh. We got some amendments from them and moved that forward with the proposed ordinance. That's before you on page seventy. Particular section one deals with the number of flags being three versus two. Section two in that ordinance dealing with far five yard signs during election season. And then section three. We noticed that there is not a limit on the amount of yard signs, even if you do want a permit to get signed. So we put a cap on the number of yard signs allowed on a property. So those three sections are what we're bringing forward to you tonight. I know we had some discussion, good discussion at the planning and zoning commission. And I believe Jeff is with us and can speak to kind of the legal issues regarding signs in regulation. So if he wants to present, I'll let him speak. And then I do know we have a member of the audience that doesn't want to speak on this particular item. With that, if you have any questions, me, I'll be happy to answer before I turn it over to Jeff.
Any other clarifying questions for Mark at this time?
I just want to be sure that you're saying that anytime throughout the year, I could have two signs in my yard.
Currently, yes. Yard signs is in that section, you can have a yard sign on your property for up to ninety days without a permit.
Oh, okay.
So if you wanted to have a yard sign longer than that, then you would actually need to get a permit to have it longer than ninety days. So that section that amends attachment A lists all the signs that you don't need a permit. So if you're looking to exceed those numbers, then you need to get a permit.
Okay, so I can't just leave two signs in my yard all the time without a permit?
Without a permit, you can leave them in yours, in your, on your property for a period of ninety days per calendar year under the current ordinance.
Under the current ordinance, and that's what I wanted to clarify.
Yeah, the, the proposed amendments to the ordinance don't change the length of time for those
Okay.
that don't need a permit.
So it's still ninety days?
If you wanted to have a science on your property for longer than ninety days, you now need to get a permit.
Okay. Other clarifying questions for Mark?
What about like real estate sign for sale sign is, you could have that as long as you want.
That is a yard sign.
That is the yard.
Yeah. Technically. But
that is, for example, a contract of six months.
If they're going to have a sign for over ninety days, they technically need to be getting a permit for that sign.
And so for the same end, or what's been presented here is to have five signs and then three flags, but it can only, they can only be up for sixty days and seven days after election date.
Without a permit.
Without a permit, okay. Clarify.
Other questions? Okay, can we hear from Jeff, please?
Well, thanks. Sign codes tend to be some of the more complicated issues that municipalities deal with because there, there, there's always exceptions and there's various rules. And then there's the US and Colorado constitutions to deal with because signs are basically a form of expression that basically involve free speech, free speech rights of individuals and businesses. So they can get really complicated really fast. And there's a number of cases that the US Supreme Court has actually ruled on regarding how governments can regulate signs. And although they do get relatively complicated with some nuances and, and you know, some sort of uncertainties, the general rule for speech regulation and sign regulation is that the government can impose reasonable time, place and manner restrictions. So these are restrictions on the type of signs, the size of the signs, lighting restrictions, placement, numeric restrictions, et cetera. You just can't regulate any types of sign, or you can't regulate in general based upon the content of the sign. So what, what, what the, what the constitution really says and the cases really say is that the government can't pick and choose which speech it thinks is better speech and give it preferred treatment over other types of speech. And there are certain exceptions to that rule. Such as obscenity, fighting words, things that are going to incite violence immediately, that kind of stuff. But generally, the government can't prefer certain kinds of speech over others. So then what we get into with sign codes is that your sign code generally has to be what's called content neutral. So you can regulate how signs, the materials are made of, the height of the signs, where they're placed, which zone districts are, they're allowed in, that kind of thing, as long as you aren't referencing the content of the sign. And so that's what we generally look to when we're creating sign codes. And the current revisions, which are really only two revisions, two major revisions for flags and for yard signs. They actually expand what's permitted under your code now. So the, these are actually expansions of people's rights to place signs. And so the reason why we just reference flags and we don't reference the type of flags or what's on the flag is because that would then be a content based restriction that would very likely be unconstitutional. And then the reason why we reference yard signs and we basically are allowing more yard signs during an election season is because we don't want to basically treat election signs, which have an election message differently than we want to treat other signs. So section two, which basically just, you can have more signs during election season. They don't have to be election signs. It can, they can have any content you want on them. You just get more signs during the election seasons. People usually want to have more signs. Typically, those would be election signs, but our code doesn't, doesn't distinguish between what kind of sign you have. So you'll see that that's basically what we're doing here is we're basically drafting provisions that are content neutral. So they're constitutional. So that, that's kind of the short of the approach that we take with sign codes. I hope that's helpful. I'm happy to answer any questions.
Questions for Jeff? Clarifying questions? Pretty clear on that? Okay, this is a public hearing. I will open this portion of the hearing up to public comment. And I believe we have one that I know of that wants to make public comment and that's Carly Linky.
Hello there.
Carly, if you would please state your name and address.
Yes, it's Carly Linky, three, two, seven, zero, nine, Columbia Ranch Road, Buena Vista, Colorado. I am speaking on the, the roadside, the signs and flags. I'm requesting that all mention of limiting free speech in regards to political signs and flag ordinances beyond the scope of public safety and the constitution of the United States of America be removed from the town ordinances. The constitution, including the first amendment stands on its own. It doesn't need any interpretation. It's very well written. And I actually see no legislatures in this area that can change this document. With that, you can, you can change the limit, you can limit the size of the signs on private property without discriminating, of course. If a real estate sign is limited to fifteen square feet, any sign expressing a message of any kind can be fifteen square feet. You can also ordain reasonable restrictions for health and welfare and safety of the community. Such as a flag must be seven feet above the sidewalk or walkway, which is already in the ordinance. A sign must be on private property, you can see that, and not impede vehicular or pedestrian traffic. Like you don't want a fifteen square foot neon sign blinding drivers. And you don't want a flag slapping somebody in the face as they walk down the street. You cannot, however, limit the number of signs on private property. This is constitutionally. No, you can't do that. You cannot limit how long the signs are on private property either per the constitution. There are several rulings in the courts as Mr. Parker was talking about. Reed versus the town of Gilbert was one of them, and this goes all the way to the Supreme Court. The first amendment applicable to the states through the fourteenth amendment prohibits its enactment of laws abridging the freedom of speech, including a municipal government vested with state authority, which the town of Buena Vista is. Therefore, has no power to restrict expression because of its message, its ideas, its subject matter or its content. With that, I would suggest making a motion that could read as follows. And I have sent a hard copy of this to Paula to put in your packet. And I also did an updated ordinance, if you're interested in that. I would suggest a motion to read it's something like follows. Free speech content in the form of freestanding signage on private property is to be no larger than nine square feet per sign, not including the frame, without a special permit. No signage or flags can impede the safety of the community by being on public right of ways, town property or blocking or impeding vehicular or pedestrian traffic. And then flags, whether on a pole or attached to structure, is not limited by size, but must be installed on private property and to not be a safety hazard to the public. It's pretty simple. This is constitutional matter. And it's pretty well spelled out. And I also so I hope you see that in your packet. I also put a new section in there on the severity ability. When you limit things, you have to kind of pay the price. So I thank you for letting me share. And I hope you do the right thing. Thank you.
Thank you. Do we have anybody else, Philip, that you can see or hands up? Not saying Mike, do you see anyone else?
No.
Okay. Hey, thank you very much. Close that portion of the public comment. Jeff, could you advise us on anything that was stated there?
No, I think a, a lot of what your speaker said is accurate. Um, it's, you know, it says that sign code law is complicated. And she mentioned the Reed versus Gilbert case, which is the two thousand fifteen US Supreme Court case, the most recent sign code case. And I think she might have quoted a sentence from that, which is generally accurate, which is basically saying you can't prefer speech, you can't regulate based on content of speech. But you know, there's a lot of other Supreme Court cases actually on sign codes. And there's a lot of other lower court cases that kind of provide some more details. I think the one inaccurate statement was that you cannot regulate the number of signs or the length of signs on property. That's just not correct. There's, the law does allow you to do that because, because that basically falls within the category of a time, place and manner restriction and not a content based restriction. So you can do that. And that's what your sign code does. And that's, to be frank, that's what probably almost every other sign code in the US does. They do have numeric restrictions in a lot of them, and they have time limitations in a lot of them. So that's, that's not totally accurate, but I do think that, you know, the general gist of what she said is, is accurate. And I, our, our sign code, other than the statement about the time limits and the numbers, our sign code is actually consistent with, with the law, including the most recent Supreme Court case.
Thank you, Jeff. There's any other questions for staff? Clarifying questions for Jeff?
Jeff.
Go ahead. Sorry, just a, a point of order on, on that. Our current code is for yard signs, which they type of sign, not the content of what the sign says. And under our current code, if you don't want a permit, the yard signs are limited to six square feet. I know there was some mention of nine in that presentation, but the current side code is for six square feet per sign, yard side. If you want to do a temporary. If you want a sign that's there, you're around, then you would fall under the permanent sign section. So we have a specific section that deals with tempers versus permanence.
Cindy, you had a question?
I had a question for Jeff when he was talking about the time. You said that our ordinance was in line except for the timeframe. What did you mean by that?
I, I may not have spoken correctly. Your ordinance is consistent with the constitution and the law. You do, excuse me, impose time limitations on the length that some signs could be in place. And so that's actually consistent with the law. What I, what I, what I was, I think I was trying to say was that your, your speaker a minute ago said that the government cannot impose time restrictions on the length of time that a sign can be on private property. And that's, that's not accurate.
Okay.
So I wanted, I, I was saying our code is consistent with the law and consistent with what she generally was stating, except for the time limitation and numeric limitation statements that she made.
Thank you.
You're welcome. And, and just as another note, um, you know, you see older sign codes that were written a long time ago. I mean, not, not that long ago, frankly, they would have all these types of signs that they would list like that were basically based on content. They would say real estate signs can be, you know, are accepted from this and you know, yard sale signs can do this. And they just list all these types of signs. And but, but the sort of rule is, is that if you have to read the sign to determine what kind of sign it is, well, then it's content based. And so I think I might have seen a comment from somebody that was saying that real estate signs are, are not content based signs and or they're not, not sub, they're not, they're not a form of speech. And, and, and that's not accurate either. You know, they, they are a form of speech. They're actually a form of commercial speech, which actually has less protection than non-commercial speech. So my point is, is that you really want to try to get away from describing the sign. So my point is, is that you really want to try to get away from describing the sign based upon the message it conveys. So you have a blank piece of, a blanked square, and it says for sale. You know, that's, that's, that's a permissible sign. But if you basically regulate it based upon what it says, like real estate signs give this or political signs, you know, vote for so and so, getting into the content-based regulations that make your sign code unconstitutional. So that's why Mark was saying a yard sign is just a yard sign. It doesn't, doesn't refer to the message. So I wanted people to understand that the town is basically trying to treat all signs equally, regardless of their content. And that's why there's no special treatment for political signs or special treatment for, for real estate signs or anything else. Because once you permit like a real estate sign and you give them, like extra treatment, you can be there forever. And then you basically say, but a, you know, a sign with a non-commercial message, you know, describing somebody's political religious beliefs can't be there for that long. Well, then you're favoring one form of speech over another, and that makes your code unconstitutional. So that's why there's nothing referencing content in general in your sign code.
Hey, thank you, Jeff.
And just to follow up on that, we do regulate the types of signs. So we have, we have full signs. We have people who have wall signs. We have people who have freestanding monuments signs. That's the type of sign, and that's how the regulation is based, what the type of the sign is, but not the message of the sign.
Any other clarifying questions for staff? Okay, I close this portion of public hearing. Trustee comments, interaction? Motion? Continue further discussion. Motion to approve?
I can make a motion that we approve ordinance number ten.
Second, twenty-one.
Second, second row. Further discussion? I will say I appreciate the time your staff has put into this.
Yeah, definitely.
Roll call vote, please.
Trustee Fay.
Yes.
Trustee Lucrezi.
Yes.
Trustee Nyberg.
Yes.
Trustee Rowe.
Yes.
Trustee Swisher.
Yes.
Trustee Polk.
Yes.
Thank you all very much. Motion passes. Mark, Jeff.
You.
Thank you for your time. Next item on the agenda is item D of public hearing on short-term rental license policy. This is a public hearing on the adoption of ordinance number eleven, series twenty twenty-one, entitled, an ordinance amending certain sections of Articles Two and Article Seven of Chapter Six of the Buena Vista Municipal Code concerning short-term rentals. You go to the same place, Philip? Are you going to lead this?
Oh, wait. I will start and then we'll. Yeah. Start and hand off, so.
All right, sorry. Want to start?
Oh, wait. I think I'm starting. Yeah, let me run with Mark. So I'll say a few words and I'm going to turn it over to Joel Minton, who's going to take us through a presentation here, kind of outlining what the proposal is, and then give some context of, of where this came from and, and some of the nuances and things that have been adjusted in the latest iteration. But I wanted to say a few words. One, this is a topic that's been discussed by the town, by the board for, for a number of years, dating back to at least twenty sixteen. And it was in twenty eighteen that the board decided that there, there were some concepts and things happening in other municipalities. There was a growing question, sometimes a concern about how many short-term rentals were, were popping up in town. This was back in twenty eighteen. And, and there were some, I guess, some calls to start making legislation that would start to restrict. And at that time, the town decided, we don't actually have data, first of all, to proceed into making that determination. So the decision in twenty eighteen was to put a licensing process in place, which is very common in, in towns and cities. And so we've been doing that ever since, and that's been a very successful process. And I want to credit Grant Brians for leading that effort and being a, a, a really good advocate for short-term rental owners and an educator for the public on this matter. He also is our code enforcement officer, so has, has brought a lot of, I guess, knowledge on the subject back to the board during that time. What that also has allowed us to do is actually gather data. So we now know how many we have, where they're at, what types of structures they're in, how people are using them, and all of that. So that's what brings us to twenty twenty. I do want to call out that we, we had a work session in May twenty twenty where we presented for the first time, here's the picture using data of, of what it looks like. And at that time, the board decided, yep, that looks good. We're going to proceed forward. We're not taking any action to change our codes, our ordinances, our policies. But it's good to see the data, but we need more. So fast forward to twenty twenty-one and the board, we've had a couple of work sessions and several agenda items on the topic because there is a growing concern. We're hearing more and more, and we're seeing a lot of action being taken by other municipalities. So again, town is taking a, a, an approach of, let's understand what, what our data is, what's going on in our community, not necessarily what other communities are doing, but being aware and learning from what's going on in other communities. And so we've gone through a few iterations leading up to the proposal that's before you tonight. And at the direction of the board, we, we have brought forward something that I think balances a lot. And we, as you see in the packet, and you'll probably hear in public comment tonight, there's a lot of different views on the matter. It is a complex issue, and there are a lot of pros to this. It is a, a important part of our economy. And so I'm very proud of, of what the staff has done at the direction of the board to try to protect what we've heard and know is important to our local community on the benefits, especially economic benefits of short-term rentals, while also trying to achieve what the board outlined as a problem statement from the perspective of not necessarily strictly housing. And Joel will touch on that, and that was well outlined in the packet. But looking at what the board discussed as community character and kind of looking at the outside speculation that we're seeing increasing in communities like ours. And, you know, ultimately, we're trying to balance a lot of different aspects here. So staff has worked tremendously hard on this. That's not to say that what's been created is perfect or solves all issues. But I do want to recognize the effort that's been put in this from staff. There's been a lot of, a lot of discussion. Our community members have done a good job bringing questions, comments, concerns forward. I think a lot of that has been integrated where possible to where it's still, you know, ties back to what the board identified as the goal of this effort. So with that, I'll turn it over to Joel, and he'll step through what we've got here tonight.
Thanks, Philip. Thanks, Mayor. So I'll get going here in just a, just a second, but want to point out the difference. What Philip's talking about is the, is licensing issues as opposed to like land use and zoning issues. So what, what we've been tasked with visiting are things that have to do with licensing, land use, zoning, et cetera, go for the planning zoning commission and then other board trustees. So, so just keep that in mind. We're, we're not talking about zoning issues and land uses licensing. So I will give a little presentation. So I'll give a little presentation, and then there's opportunity for the trustees to ask some clarifying questions, as you all know, for the public. Then we'll have a public comment in a public hearing. Board will deliberate. And then what we ask of the board is some kind of motion at the end, and that can be to approve it, to deny it, to approve with amendments, continue it to date certain or not a date certain. You guys know, but that's kind of the process for the evening. Included in the packet is the staff report that will kind of touch on parts of it. You guys have the draft ordinance that you were able to take a look at. There was, there's also a copy of a letter that staff sent to current license holders, short-term rental license holders on August thirteenth that informs them of some of the changes specifically related to some of the kind of more contentious items. There's also links to the zoning map and the comprehensive plan. That's our guiding document that is the substance behind this. And there's also several letters about short-term rentals that came out before the packet was presented. And I know you all received other, other letters since then that are part of the public record, even if they're not in the packet themselves because they came in after the deadline. So. So just a little bit of a history, and Philip touched on quite a bit of this, you know. So this is, this is, we're looking at this because people in the community said, hey, take a look at this, and not just the community, but in other, at other municipalities. We created, you know, we have the Chaby Housing Assessment that informed this whole housing, short-term rentals, long-term rentals, what to do with housing in general. And we've been working with Salida, Chaby County, et cetera, on what to do about housing issues. So that's part of the, the community called the Just Short-Term Rentals. Like Philip said, in the spring, we, twenty twenty, we had some, some data that we presented, and you guys have seen other data as far back as, what, three weeks ago, whenever our last meeting was, I guess, five weeks ago. And at least in the spring, we determined there's no causal relationship between short-term rentals and long-term housing that we could really discern. So we needed to do more studies. We didn't know what COVID would do in the pandemic to the economy, if it was going to tank things. It turned out it did not. But we started gathering that data, and it kind of coincided with the implementation of the Unified Development Code, which also has been created to help with the housing situation. Okay, but on it, it's a separate, separate focus. So still, we've had these, we've had calls for immediate caps, moratoriums, all kinds of things. And we've said, no, let's take a look at more complete picture of what's going on. So again, like Philip said, the short-term rentals is mixed in with all kinds of other housing concerns. All right. And we need to separate the, like, short-term rentals from these other housing. Because what we're talking about this evening has a different focus than addressing the housing crisis. Because there's, again, there's no causal relationship, and it's like this, that, the one piece of the housing pie, right? That, that this is part of. We do know the short-term rentals, however, there's a positive and testable impact from short-term rentals. So we have resisted any calls for like, stop them, you know, get rid of them or whatever. We've got what to do, and let's find this balance. All of the discussions we've had have been sensitive to the comprehensive plan and the collective vision statement for the town, viewing town as a whole. And we also, also have always thought, hey, we don't need to do something because that's what other towns do. It's like, no, what, what do we need for Buena Vista to address the negative externalities of short-term rentals? Understanding that there's positives as well, but there are these negative externalities. So, so why this proposal? So this is, you know, the, the trustees talked, I guess, July thirteenth, I believe, and really focused, here are these two, two identified problems that are related to short-term rentals. Okay, they're just related. One is a perceived loss of a community feel, and one is a unabated outside speculation in real estate. In addition, we've been taking a look at how do we continue? How do we protect the people who have short-term rentals in town or properties or desire to do that? How do we help protect all and continue to, to allow people to help expand the businesses, ancillary businesses that are all tied into short-term rentals? And also, how do we allow us to get something in place? And then we can really start focusing again on working with Chaby Housing Authority to deal with some of the other housing issues that have, are kind of set aside as we're wrestling with this stuff. Okay. So also, well, why now? Again, like Philip outlined, it's great. You know, we've been talking about this since twenty fifteen comprehensive plan, twenty seventeen, eighteen, we started gathering data. Eighteen was our first full year. We've been working on details for over a year and a half and really getting into these details since, since March, how to, how to do this. Did we think of everything? Likely not. Is it complicated? Yes. Has it been misunderstood by some folk? Yeah, of course, because it's complicated. Has most input thus far been positive? It has, believe it or not. And do some people disagree with the approach, the process, government involvement, all three? Yes, of course, absolutely. And then will conditions change and be the overtime? And is this situation going to get more complex and thereby, therefore harder to resolve? Yeah, it will as well. Okay, so this is, yeah. So wanted to touch on this, this concept, oh, it's just a, you know, the short-term rentals is not going to fix a housing problem. Yeah, it's not. That's why we're not talking about it, right? This is the focus on the nuisance issues, which has to do nuisance code enforcement and refugation, as well as this speculation, which has more to do with some of the ideas on capping or allowing in certain areas, not others, these kinds of things. So there are people who will debate, no, short-term rentals do have a relationship with long-term rentals. Okay, but we're not debating that, that's fine. We're, we're taking that, maybe this helps with the, the housing pie, but, you know, we're also looking at, we've, we've created the Unified Development Code, which has all sorts of reduced transactions costs for, for developers and builders. We've streamlined processes. We've facilitated infrastructure improvements. We've got development-specific inclusionary housing approaches. We've got some new zoning, zoning and mulling over for higher, higher density potential. We've got apartments on, on the books coming up with planning and zoning that are, you know, some changes with apartments. We're talking about creating a single-room occupancy code. We've got some longer-term housing projects in the oven that we're working on. And then we're also working to coordinate with Chafee Housing Authority. So, yeah, short-term rentals, this is one little bit, we're not, that may relate to long-term housing. But we're doing these other things, and this short-term rental stuff is, I mean, if it helps with housing bonus, but it's talking about the nuisance issues and the speculative, speculative markets. There's also big questions on, hey, trustees, just pass an excise tax. That can happen, but I want to be clear that that would be a tax on short-term rentals, like an additional tax to bring in some money and revenues, and we can help fund some projects. It's a great idea. But, so you all, it needs to come from a community advocacy group. The trustees have to vote to put it on a ballot. But once they vote to put it on a ballot, trustees can't participate in, in a campaign for or against something. And so if it's not a, a, a community-driven desire, then it'll, you know, surely die once the trustees vote to put it on the ballot. So it has to come from, from folk. All right, so we, so also commercial property tax, that has to be a county statewide change. There were some questions on like, why aren't short-term rentals taxed as a commercial state, you know, commercial? Well, there was a ballot measure, what, a year and a half ago, that was, wanted it to be, but it failed. I didn't even get it out of legislature to make that at the state level. So a couple of little other things related to housing, tangential. So a couple of little other things related to housing, tangential to the draft ordinance, but I felt it was important to cover those. Okay, so we had all kinds of themes, both, all kinds of letters that, maybe half a dozen or dozen letters, probably a few more prominent against the short-term rentals. There's some common themes that we just wanted to, to point out. It's important. So, so, hey, it's, it's, it's abnormal for towns to put regulations on short-term rentals. Well, some people believe that and, and it's not the case. There's Salida, Crestview, Colorado Springs, there's moratoriums being considered at the county, Leadville. All over the place. So, so it's not an abnormal. There are, you know, some groups do not like the idea of regulations on, on short-term rentals, which is absolutely true. There's, there's, it might affect the valuation of properties in, in town, right? And that is negative for some, positive for other people. But, so there is that concern about affecting future sales and things like that, right? So that is a theme that has come out in some of these letters. Others that people are concerned that if the regulations will box people out, out of an opportunity. And again, we, you know, we draft, I'll go through the specifics, but we really tried to draft this to allow current license holders to continue as long as they apply and they're in good standing. And it's not revoked for some reason. It also expands opportunity for primary residences to have more short-term rental capabilities. And there's all kind of, there's ample room for, for additional licenses for the in-county folk. And you guys can visit that and visit the percent caps for like out-of-county folk, because that, that might be a point of discussion there. So we'll visit on that in a little bit here. There's also, hey, there's a desire to keep a property in an LLC for liability. And this proposal has a, a part of it where it's like, yeah, you can do that, but you're going to be classified in a, as a different classification of category, which we'll talk about that here in a bit. And our town attorney can speak to why that is in here as a proposal. There are other issues that point to current housing challenges? Yeah, and I just spent some time covering some of that. The process is rushed and there should be more evaluation. The, I, I wouldn't, there's always an opportunity. So public, a public hearing is designed when a policy is, we've had all these work sessions. We've had all kinds of discussions with different folk, have connected with different individuals out, out in the community. And we've put together something and that's why you have a public hearing. This is, is ready now for public consumption. Not ready for public consumption, just, you know, there's lots of input and crafting and work sessions and stuff that are public. But now here is for public hearing, and that's why there's an opportunity for trustees to continue a hearing. And like Philip said, it's, we've been talking about it for a number of years in various degrees of detail through that time. So, thank you. Okay, getting to the meat of it. Thank you for listening to all the background kinds of stuff and there's more info in the packet, of course, you guys read it. So again, key points for the ordinance, so this is, licensing is not a land use. Also currently, because there's been some questions here, short-term license is not guaranteed from one year to the next. It can be revoked. And there's some questions, what about grandfathering licenses? That term is associated with land use, not licensing. And the town attorney can speak to that if you guys would like to later. Alright, let's get into the first part. So there's really eleven different sections in the proposed ordinance. And again, some of them relate to nuisance, revocation, timeline, that kind of thing. And then there's one section that is of more interest probably to a lot of folk out here, which has to do with capping and things like that. So section one, just to remind you all, it amends the license requirements, allow for short-term rental license and a business license to be, be completed as one process. So it streamlines that process, so you don't have to do two different papers and that kind of. There's a, we, we have to add what is an ineligible structure because there's a, you know, some code language that needs fixing. And then we add some definitions of what an ineligible structure is, a primary residence, a resident and total residential housing stock, just definitions that some need to weave in currently and some would be appropriate for the, the rest of the. The next section four is about licensing requirements. And it basically says that each short-term rental needs a license, okay? And if there are multiple rooming units in one space, like you have a house and you want to rent two rooms, you need a license for each room. As opposed to if you have the whole structure rented as one license, then you just need the one license. Residency and ownership, so we're, since we're talking about having this idea of primary residency, as we'll see later. And do you own the property or is it an LLC or in county, out of county? So this describes what you need to prove that you're a resident with the, you know, driver's license, voter registration, that kind of thing. And also clears up about that you need, whether or not you need to fire an inspection for renewal, which you do need right now. But we'd like to make it easy. Next, Philip? So the categories of licenses, so in this, in this section six, there's just clears up a couple of details on longevity of a license and the classification of what, what is it? What happens if an ADU is attached or not, okay? And then it gets into this percentage cap in some circumstances and a numerical limit to the number of short-term rentals an applicant may have. So we got, and I stress that because it's a built-in loophole, right? So four categories, Philip, would you advance please? So primary residence, so the four categories I'll go through all within this. This is the first primary residence, if you live on the same property as your short-term rental and the property is in your name, your primary residence, cool. Now, i- i- it only has to be fifty percent ownership of your name, right? So that's, if you and your husband, you and your wife own a property, you could, you as an applicant can apply just as one person, because you're fifty percent ownership. We propose that there's no percentage cap on these. You can license an ADU, accessory dwelling unit, like a mother-in-law's cabin. You can license a room in your house, or if you leave town on vacation or whatever and you want to rent it out. Hey, knock yourself out. You do need a license for each one of those, but enjoy, okay? So that'll help with like, hey, I've got a business here and we want to, we live here, but we have a we rent a room, yeah, that's your primary residence. Cool, enjoy. You do have to sign an affidavit saying, hey, I live here and, you know, primary residence. You have to prove the property is your primary residence. And like I said, the, the business license, short-term rental license would become one process. So the second category is non-primary but in-county. So this is where you live in the county, but you want to rent a, a short-term rental and you don't live on that property. So you have to be resident of Chaffey County. We do promote, propose a numerical cap, percentage cap, excuse me, of three percent of the total residential housing stock. I've got some charts at the end, I'll show you kind of what that is, but the idea is you're right now, less than one percent of, when you take all the primary residences out, less than one percent of the short-term rentals in town are in-county people. So those oodles are room to grow there. We do say that each applicant would be allowed one short-term rental license in town, if it's not in your primary parcel. Now, here's where Jeff can, we'll wait to get your comments here in a little bit, Jeff. But all trusts and entities would be deemed non-residents of Chaffey County just because it's too hard to prove that LLC or something is a resident of Chaffey County. And you have to sign an affidavit and those processes would, for business license, short-term rental would be one in the same process. Jeff, can you speak just briefly about why you all recommend? I mean, one, why you might recommend, don't allow any trust at all that have short-term rental, which is, happens. But then why in-county would be difficult to prove if not impossible?
Well, yeah, so I mean, first of all, there's really no such thing as a residency for a business entity or a trust. I mean, it's basically, you can incorporate a business entity like an LLC or form a trust in Colorado. And then you could pick any address you want as its primary business locations, pretty easy to do that. So, and then there's really no like residency tests for an entity, so that's the first issue. So I think that what follows up on that is that then, you know, i- i- if you want to allow business entities or, or trusts to have short-term rentals, it's really difficult to place limits on them based upon ownership, residency of their owners, because LLCs can have other LLCs that own LLCs. It's just, I think it's just going to be too hard for the town to try and impose restrictions on trusts and business entities with a residency type requirement, because there's going to be a lot of easy ways to just create residency for the trust or the people who are owners, it's pretty easy to avoid any kind of restriction, so that was our main concern.
Thanks, Jeff.
You're welcome.
Yeah, alright, the third category would be then for those trusts and entities and then people who live out of county. So non-resident Chaffey County, we had proposed a five percent cap of total residential housing stock. In there where we're at right now, but currently we're at five and a half, which is we've gone about, since we started talking about it in July or whatever, we've gone about fifteen percent licenses, short-term rental, fourteen something, so. Anyhow, but that was the, the proposal in the packet. And, and again, the properties held in, in trust, et cetera, would be deemed non-residents, so. Fourth category are some exempted areas. So again, short-term rentals are not a land use, so this is licensing issue. But we can target some licensing requirements on different areas of town, depending on we're trying to do denser development in different places or et cetera. So we have currently proposed that the NUMS Zone District, which is essentially East Main and the South Main PUD are not subject to percentage caps. We also propose that the, that any structure, so one building in those areas can have up to three licenses per structure, if the structure is under a single ownership. And then we also say that both areas can have one license in town that's not in that three structure or not the primary residence, so condominiums, owners of condominiums would be subject to that numeric limit of one per applicant as well. Next, please. So the next section seven deals with the ability to revoke a license. Right now, there's so it expands the potential to revoke a license. Right now, it has to do with breaking the license, but we need it also tied to the nuisance code. So code enforcement can, if it's tied to the nuisance code and with some of the processes outlined, code enforcement can seek remedy with the actual short-term rental holder, by the license holder, rather than just the guest. Right now, hey, you're too, too noisy, bad guest, right? And then the guest goes somewhere else, but there's no real ability to do anything about it. So this will put the responsibility on the short-term rental license holder to want to educate the guest about what is, and it's not appropriate with the community. And then after repeated violations, one, you get, the fines are more severe and two, you can have your license revoked. So, so it puts the onus on the license holder to do something, okay, to help kind of keep that community feel. It also allows for an immediate revocation. Right now, we have, you have, there's a strike one, strike two, and strike three could be revocation. But if it's severe enough, now the code enforcement can revoke immediately. There is an appeals process outlined in here, so there's an opportunity for appeal. And it says any revocation would be for the rest of the year. I think it currently is like five years, but it's for the rest of the year. And that license would, would be considered, would not be considered as a renewal for the next year, okay? So you'd be back in the queue. Which gets to the next part, which is the timeline of all this. So, so the way we foresee it working is by August thirty-first, we determine what the total residential housing stock would be. Let's say it's eighteen hundred and thirty-four or eighteen hundred and twenty-six, I guess today, are the current residential units. By September fifteenth, we'll publish the number of licenses allowed by, you know, for that three percent, whatever percent cap. If there is a cap that is desired. People who have active and current licenses can renew for the next year before licenses are opened up to new applicants. And as long as you submit a complete application, then, then that'll be processed before the deadline and then it'll be opened up to new folk for, you know, for new licenses, so. Uh, next, Philip? So, so we did, so this is, you, you guys have seen this.
Oh my gosh.
I know, I'm going to try to zoom in. You guys have seen this before, but a version, and we updated it. So this is as of August the twentieth, I believe. It does say total residential units in town as of the twelfth, but nothing has been CO'd that we know of since then. Eighteen hundred and twenty-six, we have a hundred and sixty active licenses. And there's some percentage breakdowns of in-county, out-of-county owners, but this is before then we take a look at the different categories. So different categories, if, if this were to be in place as proposed. There are ninety-one out-of-county folk, and that includes, I think there are maybe four business entities that are, we know, we know the people, someone lives here who's tied to that business entity, but they would be considered out-of-county, so for those, there are three or four. Anyway, you've got ninety-one licenses would be available with a five percent cap, there are a hundred active licenses. Fifty-five licenses would be available for the in-county non-primary residents and there are twelve active licenses. The next category where it says unlimited, that's in-county primary residences. There wouldn't be a limit on that, and there are currently thirty active licenses. And then in the exempt areas, South Main, MUMS, they're eighteen. So, so if you scroll over, that's about five and a half percent of out-of-county folk. Point six percent of in-county, non-primary residents, one point six four percent of primary residences and, and just shy of one percent for South Main, MUMS. So that's a current snapshot of BV, so, so we know, so the, you know, some of the big concern here is the capping and, or any restriction, so. Now, we also broke that down, Philip, can you, so make it smaller. Alright, so we also did, these are potential scenarios. So rather than just say, hey, we think five percent, or we think four percent or three percent, we've got some scenarios up here, so. So we took the total in town, eighteen twenty-six units, and just going across the number, you've got the, the cap allowance. So at 3%, there would be 55, 4%, so it'd be 3, 5%, 91, et cetera. The licenses, so if we take the current number of licenses that you just saw, 55, 91, right? At 3%, we, so out of county, there's 100 active licenses. If we said, hey, let's do the cap at 3%, we have 45 too many licenses. 4%, we have 27 too many licenses. 5%, there'd be nine too many licenses. 6%, we'd have, we could have 10 more. 7%, we have 28 more. So we think county. So put these up for you guys to ponder with the numbers. We also added that was not in your packet, some hypotheticals. So, because you guys know, as the number of housing units grow, the number within that percent cap will grow as well. So we said 1900 units, 76 new, or 74 additional units. It gives you the, the, the units going across for the percentage, but you can see like, like that out-of-county, in-county down below, that 5% went from negative nine to negative five, right? In-county, and then 6% would be 14 available. So it's, and then, and then we have one, if we went up to 2,000 units. So you see that 5% went down to, to zero. And maybe I should have highlighted some of those so you guys aren't. But I didn't because I just made it.
Joel, may I?
Yeah, please, Phil.
Yeah. So, so one thing that Joel mentioned earlier on the presentation is in one of these scenarios, if there is a negative number, so let's say, let's just, for example here, look at the 4% cap on out-of-county. Given our current active licenses at 100, we would have 20 too many. That doesn't mean that town would reject any of those current licenses. They would be able to continue to renew. But we wouldn't accept any more until the housing count increased or the board increased the cap or some things like that, or existing licenses decreased, something like that. So.
And you also mentioned that four of those were entities that they, in-town owner, which they could convert and then become, they would fall into different category and would take them out of that negative anyway.
Correct.
It's kind of, okay.
And, and it's, it's property owned by the entity, not at, you know, Joel's S T R LLC or whatever, because they know the property, but the LLC, it, 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 it wouldn't be classified in that because the property would be under my ownership or something.
Right.
So that, so the next steps, y'all, is again, ask any clarifying questions. We'll do our best with us or of course, our attorney, Jeff Parker. And then I would recommend to open up the public hearing for public comment. Receive that and then follow the process. Close the hearing, deliberate. Open the hearing again if you need to, whatever, and call for a motion. Again, that more motion to approve, to deny, to approve with amendments, the ordinance, or continue the hearing with or without date certain. And with that, I will see if, turn back to Philip.
Great, great overview, Joel. Thank you for that. Mayor, I'll turn it back to you. That's what staff has on the license.
Questions for staff?
One presentation, thank you.
Go ahead, Libby.
So I'm wondering, does anybody have a multiple license right now for a housing unit? Like, like where I can say, I'm going to rent my whole house. I'm going to rent that room or that room. Does anybody have that now?
There are people who rent houses and rent rooms in houses.
Do they have separate licenses now?
You know, Mark?
Not right now.
I don't believe we have, i- if there is, it's maybe one. Grant might be on as well, but I, I, we don't have many, if there are any.
Okay.
Where people.
The reason I'm asking is that if you have a housing unit and it's in 1826 total, but you had three different licenses, it might be overstating the percentages right now. Because it's one house, but three licenses. So, so I think the percentage gets too high, but it doesn't sound like that applies to anybody at this point.
If it does, very, very few.
That's a good point because currently, or we're talking about changing that part of the licensing to go per room. And if I have this room, that's a license, and then I also want to rent my house, that's a separate license. Is that the way I understood that, the way you were saying?
Really by advertised unit. Yes. So if, if you're advertising one room, but you're living in the house, that's, that's one license and you're the primary example. If you're talking about renting your whole house, that's, that's, that's one license. So I'm trying to understand the scenario you're talking about.
Well, and that's what I'm trying to clarify, the way I understood what you said.
I think we're on the same page.
Yes. If you rent, if you get a licenses for a room, you can do that. If you decide to do two rooms, it's two licenses.
If they're two separate rental units, yes.
Gotcha. Okay. And if you do the house as a whole, even though it includes those two, that's another license.
Yeah. And if it's your primary residence, that would be for like vacation or something like that. Yeah. And so you have their license out as well. And that does not, that's not part of the cap, if it's your primary residence, it's not part of the cap or not part of a limit.
Not if it isn't. No, it feels like we could over calculate that percentage.
It would, it would give you per housing, per unit of housing, three potential licenses. If that, does that make sense?
For one, what for one housing count, yes.
Okay. That's, I think that's where you were going, and that's what I heard. That was, okay. But in now, let's take that same scenario and let's say I rented my house or got a, a license for my house. But I only rent one room. No problem. Okay, I see. And so you could do two rooms under that single license? Or not?
Not if they're advertised separate rentals.
Gotcha. Okay. So it's going to come down to how it's put out in front of the public as to how we're going to see those numbers. Okay, gotcha. Thank you. That's what I, I heard one thing and I'm going, okay, how does this work? I think it's still kind of talks to what Libby is saying that that could overstate our available housing because we could have three licenses in one house. You see what I'm saying? I mean, that's just what I'm hearing. I think that's what you're saying too.
If, if every, if you live there, yeah, but if it's, I mean, you can, each applicant's allowed one license.
Okay.
So I can buy, you know, if, if me and my wife had a house over there and she can apply for a license and I can apply for a license and we can have two, two rooms in there. But at some point you run out of applicants for that, for the person side of the property.
Okay. Now that, now that makes a difference on that. Do you understand that? I see what you're saying now. That it's the applicant side of it that changes that also.
So we have the percentage cap, but then also each applicant of one in certain circumstances. Only with one license outside of your primary residence.
Gotcha. Okay, that, that clarified that. Other questions? Does that make sense to you, Libby?
Yeah, it does. But I kind of wonder whether we should just have one master license per housing unit. So you'd have one license for the entire house regardless of whether you rented.
And would that make it harder for staff to control if we did that? That's a question. I think that's a question.
It, it, I would have to check what you think on that, right?
Yeah, that's, because that changes that whole concept.
One, one thing the, the, you could just do, you, you can specify in the license, whether it's for the whole house, whether it's for one room or two rooms, but it's still just one license.
And that is, yeah, that is in there, except maybe not the two rooms. So.
Right, right.
I have a, a question.
Yes.
Um, so if you're an out-of-county residence person and you have a building or whatever that you want to rent out two rooms, right? Then according to this, they're only allowed one application for one of those rooms. So then they would be, they couldn't rent their other one. Is that correct? If it was like two separate, you know, hey, you know, two families coming to this house, I don't want to say these two rooms, whatever. And it's an out-of-county residence person or a non-persons, they would only be able to have that one application. So they'd have to choose essentially which room they wanted to rent out or they would also maybe have to switch that up on their side to rent out the whole house. And then instead of doing two rooms, is that?
Yeah, right now I think it's one, one license for the unit. And then if you, or for the structure, right, for the house or for the house. And some of that is to prevent people from having a house, which is, has happened in town, but it's been an issue where they rent five different rooms in the house because there are five different licenses. And the ability to control that situation is difficult as opposed to, here's a house. And if you rent it and five different people pull together with whoever, some master renter or whatever, that's fine. Mark?
Yeah, just a point of clarification, our current code defines a short-term rental as no more than two habitable spaces right now. So in our code right now, you're limited to two. So it could be a whole house with five rooms as long as it's one rental space.
And it covers that whole thing.
Yes. Because once you get over three habitable spaces in our current code, we'll talk more about the definition next section. Once you get over three spaces, then you aren't a short-term rental. You become either bed, breakfast, or hotel.
Okay.
That's under our current regulations.
More clarifying questions?
Yeah, a question about the LLC part, probably for Jeff. So the LLCs are going to be part of out-of-county because they're hard to regulate. So if a person wanted to register as an in-county resident, they would have to not do it with an LLC. I assume people have LLCs, you know, I'm not a professional on this, but I assume they have it for liability. So they can't lose all their assets or whatnot. Would that open them up for liability if they couldn't register under their LLC?
Yeah, I mean, that is a, a, a big benefit of being able to use an entity to conduct your business is that you're sheltered from personal liability. You can shelter certain assets and, you know, yeah. So, you know, I, I don't know all the different options people would have other than a business entity like an LLC. So I can't say for sure that it, it, it would create more liability. But I think in the general answer is probably, probably would have more liability if you're not running these as like business entities with a business entity form. You still have insurance, you can, you obviously still get your insurance and you have certain coverages, but you, you would be doing it as an individual or as a couple. So it would definitely be, it would almost certainly have more risk, but there's probably some other ways to mitigate that. Sorry for humming and hawing, but there's some complications to the, to the answer.
Yeah. And if, so even if you live on the property and you have an LLC, it would still be counted as part of that out-of-county LLC cap.
Yes, your property is in a, in an entity's name.
It'll get property.
Yeah.
It's in an entity's name. Okay. The property is in.
You can run a business as an LLC, the property, your home could be in your name. You can be operating as an LLC, which is the majority of the cases that we have.
Okay.
More questions? Be thinking before I close, trustee staff. Okay, I will open up this portion of the public hearing to public comment. We have a list. I would ask people be mindful. But we will start off with Clark. You would like to approach podium, name and address, please.
Our case, 19048 Mountain View Drive. In this meeting, I wanted, first of all, say thank you for just the work you've done on this. And I also appreciate the favoring of the local residents, giving them some leeway. Just because I feel like that's a big, you know, there's a lot of people that depend on short-term rental income to live here. So in the county and the town. So thank you for that. I, I like that that was clarified in there. Couple of things when it comes to short-term rentals. As a real estate agent myself, I work with a lot of people that buy second homes here. And a lot of them will utilize that as a short-term rental when they're not using it. And so, you know, I've been looking over this for a while and I really don't see any case where if we restrict this, that they're going to change anything. A lot of my clients would have bought the property anyway, even if it wasn't rentable. And so the, I guess the question I would ask is the short-term rentals wouldn't exist if there wasn't a demand for them. And so if we're going to cap them and we're going to limit the number of them, then where are those tourists going to go? So, I mean, the county and the town, we've spent years on tourism advocacy and advocating for our local economy and the money coming in. And by us capping that, we're turning, effectively turning away people that the free market has brought here and we're telling them, there's no more room. So I know there's nuances with short-term rentals, but I guess I would just raise some caution on us interfering with the economy, bringing those people to us. The short-term rentals have stepped up and solved some of the issues of lack of hotels and lack of, you know, we have a lot of weddings, we have a lot of events here. And so that steps in and fills the void that we have right now because of the lack of some of those event venues and hotels. So I would just, I guess to, to wrap up, I would just ask that this is thought through. I like the, the conversation that's going on, but I would just ask that we don't make a rushed decision. I think it's very nuanced. There's a lot of things going on. And we don't have to copy any of the town. I think this is our chance as BV to step up with our own solution. And let's take advantage of it. Let's find ways to create revenue and you know, find ways to basically take advantage of that, this opportunity. The other thing to close up is the growth, the, I heard a couple of things, a growing concern, which I haven't heard a lot of the concerns. I know there's some people with concerns, but a lot of the letters I read were in support of no regulations. And then the lack of community feel, I would attribute more to the growth of Univista than short-term rentals. I guess I have a hard time connecting the breakdown of the community feel. I just don't see the correlation between that and short-term rentals. So just lots of questions. I would just ask that a, a decision is not rushed and that we don't rush to cap these until we have more data.
Okay, thank you, Clark. Next is Linda Barbeau.
My name's Linda Barbeau. I live at 425 Cedar Street. I've been actively involved in real estate and community development for almost 30 years. Serve as a member of steering committee, helping to rewrite unified development codes for a town of 50,000. I'm a set on the long-range planning committee, which helped write the 20-year comprehensive plan for that community. Or a member on the Metropolitan Redevelopment Commission and a board member of the New Mexico Main Street Program. So I do have some experience in this field. First, I appreciate the complexity of the issue and the time that you've all spent trying to address these issues. However, I feel that the introduction of so many high-impact changes in one meeting is problematic, particularly because 184-page packet for this meeting, that's 184 pages for this meeting, was made available at 5:00 PM Friday. And I don't feel this allows adequate time for the public to read, research, digest, and respond to all these proposed changes. After reading the entire packet, not only do I disagree with some of the proposed changes, I feel that there are problems with clarity, consistency, fairness, and transparency, not to. consistency, fairness and transparency, not to criticize what you've done, but I think it needs more work. Um, there's no way to explain all my concerns in a three-minute time slot, but there are many. Given more time, I plan to put my observations and concerns in writing. Um, I realize we've been unable to meet in person for much of the past year, but I truly feel there should be more time for the public to make their concerns clear to the P and Z and the trustees, preferably in a special public forum longer than this, out of three-minute time slot. Um, and allow for the free exchange of ideas, all the public, not just the people who own short-term rentals, everyone. Um, and although I appreciate the urgency of dealing with these issues because of the new numerous problems I see with the documents and the importance of getting this right and the lack of time for public input, I feel it would be premature and will not serve the best interest of the town to approve these amendments as written. And this absolutely requires a continuation so we can get it right. Thank you.
Thank you, Linda. Next is Chris Edelman.
Hello, my name is Chris Edelman. My address is two thousand and one Blake Avenue, and that's in Glenwood Springs, Colorado. Uh, I am a lawyer and I'm here on behalf of uh South Main Realty, South Main Building Company and the Town Company, which is the development company over there in South Main. Um, then I'm here to ask that trustees uh exempt South Main P U D from both the short-term rented rental percentage cap as proposed by a town staff, but also the per-person uh license limit. Um, we understand that the town staff has determined that when the, or recognized when the South Main P U D was created, short-term rentals, or at the time it was a short-term accommodations, wasn't allowable use by right and intended use. South Main was created with the idea of high density, high occupancy and high usage. The South Main neighborhood's characteristic uh is high density and high usage. To limit short-term rentals, to limit people being in South Main would have the direct opposite effect of what you're trying to accomplish here. My understanding is you're trying to preserve the neighborhood feel of certain residential areas in Buena Vista. If you are to cap the uh short-term rentals in, in South Main neighborhood, you are negatively impacting what was intended to happen there. Um, I do commend and appreciate, and my client commends and appreciates that town staff is recommending that the percentage cap not apply. My understanding of the rationale behind that is because South Main has been determined an area where short-term rentals don't have a negative impact. If that in fact is true, then it does not appear there's any rational basis to limit the number of licenses per person. You're saying South Main's a good place to have short-term rentals. Why would you regulate it anymore? So my client is asking that the individual license cap not apply in the South Main P U D. But also say if, listening to the presentation, and I did read the packet, um, but and there was a good bunch of good information in there. Uh, if the idea behind having a per person license limit is to avoid or stop external speculation, meaning out-of-town speculation, that goal's already met with your five percent cap. As the chart shows today, you're over the five percent cap. You're not going to issue another license to someone who doesn't live here. So all that per person limit does is it hinders and has a negative impact on folks who live in Buena Vista. Doesn't seem like you would want to do that. When you are considering my request, if you do consider it, my client's request, I would like to point out that the P U D zoning text for South Main does con- consider short-term accommodations. And that is term is a little different than when the short-term rentals. I believe the short-term rentals is a term of art that's come about since Airbnb, VRBA was created. The South Main P U D was here before those concepts uh were in existence. So the terminology might be a little bit different, but it does allow up to six short-term accommodation units in the mixed residential zone in South Main. You're looking to further limit that to only three. And as a use by right within the zoning tax that was approved by this body even years ago, uh, uh, has no limit on in the mixed in the mixed-use district. So you could have as many on a property as you want. It appears that this regulation is really aimed at residential neighborhoods. It doesn't seem to fit, and I understand the complexity and the difficulty of having a one-size-fits-all. It doesn't fit very well in a mixed-use P U D. Their building sizes are uh can be substantially larger than you might have in, in your residential area. And it can have more units. You could have a retail or a business on the bottom. You could have six, seven or eight units upstairs. It could all be owned by one person. And what this regulation would say is only one of those units could be a short-term rental. And again, if you're exempting South Main from the percentage cap, I don't see any rational basis to also say we're going to impose a per-person license limit in the same area where you've determined there's no need to regulate it. I'm also asking, and I'm not exactly sure what, how long the moratorium is planned, but if you decide to move forward tonight, approve the ordinance and you exempt South Main from the percentage cap and the license per person, I'm also asking that you would not impose a moratorium in South Main. There would be no need. And then I had one other question, our comment, and this is based on the nuisance revocation. Uh, is the language in the ordinance, or I would encourage you to make sure that the language in the ordinance limits that nuisance-triggered revocation to a nuisance that occurs on the property and not a nuisance that occurs with an owner somewhere else. It really seems like it should be limited to the property. It may already. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Chris. And I noticed J J walked in. Do you want to make a comment, J J?
Yes, please. Uh, J J Ken's father, I live at nine oh five Switzer. Um, obviously there are many, many facets and many complexities to this ordinance. Um, I'm sure everybody here is here to speak about whatever particular thing affects them and is kind of most important to them. And uh, it's kind of easy to get down into the weeds on sort of like specific specifics of what's going on here. But I guess I really would like to talk about just two things in general. And uh, the first is just the idea of limiting S T Rs uh as a policy is essentially um, limiting the potential of local small businesses. Um, you know, all the people who, who clean these properties, the managers, the owners themselves. Uh, you know, we're, we're making a choice here to cap the upside uh that these people have. That these are people who've created a job, a life, you know, a whole, a whole setup for themselves based on this possibility, this uh, this idea. And um, you know, obviously we're trying to achieve a lot of different here in town and the town is trying to, to weigh a lot of things, but just uh, would like to be clear that we're, 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 we're capping their upside. And uh, that just seems like sort of a generally unfortunate direction for our town to be taking. Uh, the second thing that I would like to say uh is that limiting in-town owners to one non-primary residence doesn't seem like the group of people who want to limit. It's, it's great that the language here is uh for primary residents, that, that there's, there's no limit on licenses, but uh, I just don't know why the citizens of our town should be limited on having uh more than one non-primary residence. If there's anybody that should be uh being encouraged to make an investment in our town and to have oversight and interaction with uh, the ownership of S T Rs here, it seems like it should be um, the people of our town. Um, I am an S T R owner. Um, I, I, it's honestly been kind of a, a, a life-changing thing for me. Uh, gave me the chance to, to start a, a small business, a personal business. I'd never done that. I'd always worked for somebody. It's given me a chance to know a prosperity that a lot of people uh here have experienced. That has been very life-changing in many ways, I'm sure. I, I'm not personally interested in collecting multiple non-primary residents S T Rs here, but I hate to think that other citizens of this town, that the people here are working in this business, trying to make a business, trying to make a living, trying to uh, make a go of all this, that, that they should be capped. So uh, I think if um, I can summarize my request here. It's just that um, the potential prosperity of, of people here uh shouldn't be limited. And, and uh, I would ask that you remove the cap for non-primary residents licenses to locals. That they be allowed to have an unlimited primary and non-primary S T Rs. Thank you.
Thank you, J J. Uh, Trish Conver?
Well, hello. Um, I am Patricia Scarpella Conver. Bill Conver is my husband and we live at two forty-eight North San Rita Cristo. And we have the short-term rental at two forty-six North San Rita Cristo, right next to our home. And um, we, it's his parents' family. We um, have had it in the offer family in the Morgans for since the nineteen twenties, that property. And um, we were fortunate to be able to um acquire it. Um, it's a long story, but I don't take time for that now, but we're here. And we were able to retire here and come back and um, live at two forty-eight. Two forty-six was his aunt and uncle's. It belonged to someone else. And um, I have to just give God credit. He worked out the details and we were able to acquire it and bring it back into our family. But in doing so, uh, we retired here debt-free, um, built our shop. We're happy, we're good. But we wanted that property back in the family and it was made available. So we did. And so in doing so, um, we needed a loan to uh acquire it. And uh, and we rented it out to a lady for years. And um, she paid seven twenty-five. We added five hundred to it to make the house payment. And that house, um, we were right there. We mowed the lawn. We put a new roof on, new windows. We upgraded it. We painted it. We did everything. But she kind of owned it because she lived in it. And she didn't really like us too much to get in her space. And we wanted to fix a few things and inside, but she said, no, 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 it's good, it's good. So it really wasn't ours, even though we were making the payment on it. And we have family that comes and our home is small, so we had to go to Vista Courts, which is fine. We like supporting local businesses. And our kids went down there to stay or they piled up in the shop, but we were able to acquire it back. Uh, I told you in the beginning. And so after that, after four years, we gave her a year's notice so she could have plans to move on. And we spent a year updating it, fixing it, getting it ready for part-time rental. And so that's what we've been doing. This is our third year. And uh, we, it's kind of slow to begin with. And then last year, even with COVID, it, it grew. And this year, we've been blessed beyond measure and we love it. And short-term rentals are important because we do bring uh people into our community. They appreciate it. They love it. They love our space that we have to offer them. They respect it. We've had no complaints. Um, it's, I hope you don't go asking any neighbors if people want to complain because somebody might find something somewhere to complain about. But not with us, I hope not, but others. Um, I think we need to keep a positive outlook with short-term rounds. I like what these two people that have spoken before, maybe there's four of y'all, but have said, I think that's uh, makes sense. We're small-time business, small um, part-time business owners. Uh, we want to get that, that loan paid off. And the way we can do it is to have our short-term. It has benefits because our family can stay there when no one else is there. Um, we're making enough income to make the house payment and some of the other expenses. And uh, we've met so many great people, not known as Tom Dark. Three years that we have thought, oh boy, we wish they weren't here. And they're respectful and they love it and they bring income to us. And uh, we send them out to the Viking, we send them out to the Thai restaurant and simple eatery and rented motor, you know, uh, side-by-sides are, are people that have been here this week. They came for a wedding. And we've had a lot of young couples come from Denver that are professionals that have come and spent the weekend with their littles or just to get out of Denver and, and work here. So it's not a negative thing. It's a positive thing. And I'm thankful that you did not lump us into uh causing us uh saying that we're the blame for not enough rentals in town for, for short, for people that need a place to live while they're working here. Um, I can't remember your name. What is it?
Joel.
Joel, well, thank you. I think you did a good job presenting everything and you made it understandable. Uh, I really enjoy working with Grant and his team and, and all of y'all. Thank you for the hard work you put into making all these decisions. Um, so anyway, thanks for the time and it's a good thing. And it means a lot to us personally to have the opportunity to have a short-term rental.
Thank you, Trish. Uh, Leslie Quilco?
I'm gonna say good things. I'm just kidding. I'm just kidding. So thank you for the opportunity to be a part of this tonight. And um, my husband, oh, Leslie Quilico, one five seven two five Farlane. Um, my husband, Steve and I run a business where we host short-term rentals. That's our entire business. So we host for other owners. And so um, I wrote it down. There are some things in here that maybe haven't been said and a lot that has, but maybe to quickly reiterate. Um, as a business owner who is affected by this decision, I'm actually very much for regulations in the S T R industry. I believe that common sense regulations benefit communities in great ways. Um, I think it's easy to cast S T Rs as the villain in this situation, um, and to throw around those nebulous terms like community character, neighborhood feel. Um, some of the positives I see that would be worth holding up. And Joel, I agree. I think you did a great job of, of saying all of this. Um, the first is, a few people have mentioned a second form of income for families that are primary residents here. So um, that second or third income stream is really needed for a lot of families in our community to be able to live here and to put their time and efforts into this community. And so I'm super grateful that you guys in your proposal were very supportive of um, giving preference to folks who are using their properties in this way. I think that's a really wise decision. Um, the second benefit, um, J J mentioned it a little bit, is jobs for, for local cleaners that pay a livable wage. Um, our small little business, I just looked at the numbers. Um, we contracted cleaners at thirty dollars an hour. We paid over thirteen thousand dollars in July to local cleaners and we're tiny. And so I think that it's um, really beneficial for some additional livable wages in this community. Uh, the third is providing needed beds for tourists in our community. Um, there really aren't enough beds available for the amount of tourists that we permit in our county. Um, our hotel beds plus current S T R beds aren't close to being able to sleep the number of tourists we're inviting in our town. For raft, to hike, to fish, to attend a wedding. This immediately always makes me think of the impact that could come to our already overrun this first camping areas and our hills in general, if more and more people decide that camping is their only option. And the last that's been mentioned is revenue for our town. Um, quick numbers showed me that a family of four that stays in an S T R for a few nights easily sends a thousand dollars in our community. I think of that and think um, this spending creates and sustains so many jobs for our local people that many of the folks who are desperate to find long-term housing solutions or will not be here if tourists stop coming to our community because there won't be these sustainable jobs. Uh, many people in this room and many people in our community are sustained by tourism. Um, just hoping that you see short-term rentals are a piece of the tourism pie. And our, and to crack down on one piece, just lodging without sustainable growth models in the other areas won't serve our town in the future. Um, some, a few specific questions related to the proposed, clearly not to be answered tonight, but maybe to spark conversation. Um, where exactly did those specific percentages come from? Um, I see them from, from my perspective as substantially lower than the cap is needed. I'm not saying there shouldn't be a cap. They just seem very low. Um, Summit County, I hear all the time, we don't want to be Summit County. Well, Summit County is at thirty percent. And so when I look at that, I go ten percent, seems like, you know, fifteen percent. There, there's a space there for some, we're looking at maxing at eight percent. Um, and with it, some of that percentage being specific to in-county, we'll probably never hit that. Um, so um, the other mentioned by somebody is that um, that fear of an investment company coming into town and buying up multiple properties seems like. seems like when you allow people to only own one, that solves that fear. And so curious as to why that cap is still so stringent and low, even when we seem to have found a way to kind of substantiate and get that fear out. Any more information on how you'd move forward with revocation of licenses? I think mentioned here, I can see that not helping with neighborly feel. If a neighbor with an issue with another neighbor who runs an STR knows if I report them three times, they're going to get revoked. We might have some non-neighborly feelings happening in our community. Also a question of would you consider revoking licenses that people hold if they do not have a minimum number of nights booked per year? I don't know what that number should be, but I know that that would keep more beds available in our community by not letting people hold licenses that aren't renting their homes. One thing not addressed in your ordinance that I have seen is to require more on the applications such as a trash plan, a parking plan, a noise plan. The possibility that's been mentioned in the county, but not in the town of having a local agent. I don't say that to build up our business. I say that because a local person in town, that is the point person to call if anything is broken in the nuisance code, seems wise to me. But if they're out of county people, holding licenses, you're not trying to track down somebody that lives hours away to tell them that a bear got in their trash can, but you're tracking down the local agent that they've listed. I don't know that that has to be a business person or a specific business. It could simply be a person they know in town, but a local agent seems a really wise thing to put on our applications to me. So, thank you. I think some of your thoughts towards regulation are really good and wise. As others have said, I just believe more time and energy and more thought and discussion around this could include things that would actually support our tourism industry and support our community feel moving forward. Thanks for your time.
Thank you, Leslie. Next is Craig and Diana.
It's just going to be Craig, 128 Brady. Diane's not here tonight. She said a lot of great things. We also own an in-town hosting company. We have about 25 to 30 clients and almost all of them are out-of-town owners. We too are, we take a lot of pride in employing a great team of cleaners. And we too pay about $30 an hour. We're really excited. One of our, we help out a lot of teachers in the summertime. And one of our cleaners was a student and she worked part-time for us, I mean, $6,000 this summer. That's awesome. So I think that's a good thing. I think it's easy to paint a broad brush on these out-of-town owners as fat cats, you know, who are making money off the backs of people here in town who pay high mortgages, high rents. But I just want to share one story. One of our clients, right now Troy and Sarah. Troy is retired Marine, they live in Colorado Springs. He works as a contractor for the military there. Sarah grew up in Buena Vista, graduated from Buena Vista High School. They live in Colorado Springs, they have family here, they've built a house here if they want to eventually move back up there. They have four littles right now and they're going to be in Colorado Springs probably for the next 15 to 20 years, but they want to be up here. They want to use their home here as a family, but they also want help with the mortgage, renting it out, short-term. Right now, they got the paperwork, they went to go turn it in, they were told, sorry, we can't take your paperwork right now. And according, if we go forward with this 5% cap, they would just say, sorry, we know you built your house to do this. We know you want to eventually come back here to BV, but you can't do it. Matter of fact, all of your plans, we just totally squashed. So what you had planned for the next 15 years, you were like, come up with Plan B. That's a lot of, a lot of the people we work with, they have great connections to Buena Vista. They have long-term goals of living here in Buena Vista. They just want to get into the market at these prices today rather than prices 10 and 15 years down the road. So I think it's, I think we need to expand the way we think of these out-of-town owners as not just people who are trying to cash in on the Buena Vista wave, but really want to be part of Buena Vista. And as far as that community culture piece, I really agree with Leslie. An in-town representative, someone who will step up and take care of problems, take care of issues, take care of the garbage can when the bear knocks it over, right? Who's going to do that? I think just, I think it needs to be on the application, someone that will do that. I also am for regulation. I do think 8% is really, really low. So thanks for your time, that's all I have.
Thank you, Craig. Next, Jackie Cole?
Well, I hate to say it, but I'm not one of these guys. I live in town, I have the house in town, I've had it for 20 years. I love this town. I work at Jan's, I see a lot of tourists every summer and they are great people. In my neighborhood, right across the street from me, there's a short-term rental. It's been running every night this summer, every night, different people. Everyone that's been there has been great, they're quiet, they don't make any noise, they don't tear anything up. It's been amazing to me. And then down the street, I have another short-term rental, same thing. And I live in an old neighborhood, a very close neighbor. And I've talked to all my neighbors about renting my house out and they think it's a great idea. Of course, I just turned 65 and I don't have retirement plans, so what the heck up am I going to do? But I want to work at Jan's the rest of my life. So anyway, I'm all for this. I'm all for the short-term rentals. I love the tourism, it's how I make my money, it's how many businesses in town make their money. And we don't have enough accommodations. So it makes sense to me to keep working on this plan and make something that works for everyone. But I want to know when I can put my application in.
Okay, thank you, Jackie. This is a public hearing, so is there anyone else who would like to make a comment? Yes, please, step forward and state your name and address.
Jennifer Wright, 15740 Par Lane. I'm also a Realtor here. And I go back and forth with the community and also the ability for town people to make money. It's hard for people to make money here, we all know that. But something I haven't heard here tonight, you started doing this research from 2016 and 2021. I wonder how much revenue the town makes from tourists coming in. And that is, and they are coming here because they have a place to stay with the short-term rentals. So I'd like to see some of that correlation. I also think that we need a little bit more time to talk about this issue because it's important to all of us, possibly for different reasons, to make our community the one that we enjoy and want to be here as well as other people. Thank you.
Thank you, Jennifer. Is there anyone else who would like to make a comment? Yes, please, step forward, state your name and address.
My name is Veronica Goines. I live at 504 Gold Street, right down the road. I hate public speaking, I can talk one at a time with my clients, but this is terrifying to me. I do property management as well. I'm also a waitress at Simple Eatery, so I see both sides of this argument. And I really hate public speaking. I agree with basically what everybody here said. Especially the, if we're already going to place in like only one license for people. But the cap does seem pretty low to me. And it does, my boyfriend is starting a handyman service in town because of the short-term rentals and just rentals in general. So it does definitely help out a lot of local businesses and entrepreneurs.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who would like to make a comment? Yes, please, step up, state your name and address.
My name is Elizabeth, I live at 502 South Pleasant. And I just want, as you are considering this whole process, just to really evaluate, who will this benefit by capping it? And how many people will it hurt? Just keep that part in mind. And I very much agree with a lot of what has been said. There is a lot to that packet and I haven't had time to look at the packet. I think this needs a lot more time of discussion and community involvement. Thanks.
Thank you. Anyone else?
We have all the time.
Oh, forgot about that.
Yes, Mayor, hey. We've had a number of attendees posting in chat and some have their hands raised. So I'm just going to call out their names first and then call on them individually, if that's okay.
Thank you, Mike, take care of it.
Sure, so we have Christine Sterling, Jacob Mueller, Christina Randall, Troy Haddock, Adam Massaro, and Eric White. I think all would like an opportunity to speak. So let me unmute Christine first.
Good evening, can you hear me?
Yes.
Yes.
Oh, wonderful, thank you so much for giving me the opportunity to just speak for a moment. I thought that I would just take one second to give you a perspective of somebody who has purchased a property there and it was about a year and a half ago. And Buena Vista is my favorite place in Colorado. I've lived in Denver for 20 years. And it's a dream come true to have a place there. And when I share it with others in terms of the short-term rental, which I do very rarely, because it is my second home and hopefully my permanent home at some point, that it's really a blessing to share it with others. And I feel like that is something that maybe wasn't mentioned. And I really appreciate everything that everybody said tonight, I think it's amazing. I just wanted to say that this, this place is a place that I want to be a part of the community. I want to participate. I've been on this call for hours, you know, and waiting to just see what's going on because it's so important to me. And I just thought I would just give that perspective real quick and let you know that I just, I appreciate being a new part of the community. And I thank you for giving me the chance to ask some questions and be a part of this, this hearing.
Thank you. Michael, next one?
All right, next I have Jacob Mueller. Hi Jacob, you should be allowed to talk, or hold on.
There you go. There we go. Can you hear me now? Excellent. My name is Jacob Mueller, 623 Cedar Street, A101. First off, I just want to say that I really appreciate that we get to do this together. I think it's just a wonderful thing that we get to be in a community and discuss these things. I do sincerely apologize for not being there. I had a last-minute work trip that took me out of state. And yeah, I very much would prefer to be with you all and discussing this. I think lots of people have put up excellent points. It's clear that Joel and the team, our city government has spent a significant amount of time and thought and energy on this. And I think that's really commendable and I think it ought to be praised and recognized. And I think what a lot of people have made good points about are all valid and worth considering. And while I prepared remarks, I think I'm going to actually speak aside from those. So I want to take a question towards the very beginning of the presentation of identifying the problems that we're facing. I believe two problems were identified. One is we're losing our community look and feel. And the second was we need to solve negative externalities. I believe those are the two problems that were identified. I think we need to be really, really clear about what those two things are. Because what if I feel that this proposal actually is negating our community feel, being an open and welcoming community for people outside of our state? Like the previous speaker made a comment or somebody outside of the county to enjoy our place. What if I believe that this proposal is actually negative for our community feel? And then second, regarding the negative externalities, what if this proposal has negative externalities for me as a property owner here at BV, as a business owner and property owner? So I think I'd like the board to really consider the problems that have been framed here. I think we really need to nail this down and be far more clear before we make any kind of long-ranging or broad policy decisions regarding short-term rental regulations that are in this proposal. And I would just ask the board to take a little bit more time to maybe formulate those problems and really identify how our community feels about those things and really quantify that and make a more strong case for the existence of those problems. That's all I have to say.
Thank you, Jacob.
Thank you.
All right, so next I have Christina Randall.
Thank you, Christina Randall, 111 Meadow Lane, here in town. And just real kudos to Grant and Joel in particular and everybody who played a hand in this. And Joel, I bet next time you're offered special projects manager, you'll think strongly about it. I just have a clarifying question. Why is South Main treated differently than the rest of our town?
We can address comments after your statements if you'd like, at this point.
That's it.
Yeah, that's it, okay, thank you. Is there anybody else, Michael?
Yeah, I have three more. I got Troy Hodak. Let me enable him real quick. Right, Troy, you should be able to talk.
Hi, everybody, thanks for having me, I appreciate it. I just want to make this quick and I didn't have a comment. Thank you to everybody who's spoken thus far and thank you for all your work that you put into this. But I was just curious how the 3% and 5% caps were determined and also the likelihood of those either being increased or, you know, just basically what data was used to determine that and what data would be used in the future to determine what would be best for the community in Buena Vista and in particular.
Thank you, Troy.
All right, next I have Adam Massaro. All right, Adam, you may need to unmute.
No questions.
Okay, thanks, Adam. Then I have Eric White. Hold on one second, Eric. All right, you should be able to talk, Eric. All right, Eric, you may need to unmute.
Oh, thank you.
There you go.
Hi, everybody, thanks for letting me speak tonight. I know it's late, but I have a property on 313 West Arkansas. And I picked this up in March as kind of the Colorado dream for me. I live in Castle Rock right now. I've lived in Colorado for 30 years. I've actually have looked at land and houses in Chaffey County ever since 20 years probably I've been looking. But now I can afford the property values of homes in all of Colorado. Gone crazy in the past couple of years. I blame Peyton Manning and marijuana for all this. But fortunately, I've But fortunately, I've I've been able to get enough property values, be able to refinance during this time and be able to put a down payment on a on a mountain house. My dream is to have a mountain house. And I'm able to do so while paying my current mortgage and also being having a short-term rental. It's been it's been a good experience so far. The people that I've had in the house have spoken very highly of Buena Vista. They've mentioned that they want to come back. They want to maybe buy a house here. They've had nothing but good things to say. What, and I know I don't want to reiterate what other people have said, but these people eat out, they go rafting, they go skiing, they go to the hot springs. They want to do stuff outside of the house. And I think it's important to realize the economic impact, obviously. And like what someone said earlier, that would be nice to know what is the economic impact that these short-term rentals are bringing to town? For instance, just myself, I pay $150 for the cleaning person. She's been there more than, I mean, thousands of dollars. $30 a week for a teenager to come mow my grass. I've had multiple projects done at the house that I've given back. Also, I can get there in six years when my kids go to college. That's my dream. So any rate, one other note that I had was a cool story. I just had a guy check out of the house. He was there specifically to train for the for the Leadville 100 non-bike race. He wanted to get acclimatized and he was from Kansas City. And we spoke almost every other day about his training, about where he went and had coffee. And it was really cool to hear his experiences. And I think this is one of the things that you gather when you have a short-term rental, these connections that you're able to establish. Unlike a hotel, short-term rental, it brings people back. That's all I wanted to say. And thanks a lot.
All right, Mayor, I think that was everyone online.
Okay, thank you. I will close this portion of the public hearing. Any other clarifying questions or staff? There were a couple of questions raised. Well, we could start with, I guess, the first one that stands out is the South Main. There is no, we have also the M U M S that is unlimited. And the logic there, correct me if I'm wrong, is because of that corridor. And it is highly tourist. And that's right, we put no restriction there, more or less.
Well, for South Main, it's its own, it's a planned unit development, so it's its own. They have their own zoning code, separate from Towns Code.
Yep.
So that's primarily why it's always treated differently. And the Colorado Center would be as well when when we would see certain things going on there. You can do some things that you can't do other places in town, et cetera. So and then Main Street, yeah, it's just a different, you know, it's a targeted commercial area that is not the commercial area of the highway. So it's just a targeted commercial area for for development and tourism. Mark has something to add.
Yes, Mark.
Short-term rentals are a special use permit on the mixed-use Main Street District. For those in the audience, excuse me, the mixed-use Main Street are those properties directly abutting East Main Street, east of the highway. So those are all the properties that are zoned next to Main Street. The intent when we wrote the zoning ordinance was to have the most intensive uses in our downtown area. So but the issue with the mixed-use Main Street District is there is no overnight parking allowed on Main Street. So part of the review that we handled as part of a special use permit for those short-term rentals is making sure that they are having are mitigating any potential impacts like not having parking spaces overnight for guests on Main Street. So that is part of the reason why it is a special use permit that has to go to the Planning and Zoning Commission under our UDC. So we are reviewing that at the time of those applications. We have had several applications for short-term rentals on on Main Street in the M U M S District. We recently had one, I believe, back in May, I believe, of this year for a proposal seeking to have the ability for 10 short-term rentals in a building that they are working on design for. The Planning and Zoning Commission did approve that, subject to some conditions like adequate parking off-street in the back of that property. So that is the additional reasoning why the mixed-use Main Street District was handled differently. The other PD, Joe already discussed, they have a different zoning code than the rest of town.
Another comment here, I guess, question that seemed to appear to keep coming up was the loss of a license. Okay, so if I remember correctly, a statement was made, there currently were nine over at this point in time, if we go at that percentage. But if they reapply, they will get their license. Nobody is saying, nope, we're nine over, we're going to take nine, drop them, hot rock, you're gone.
Correct.
Everybody, the responsibility falls on the holder to reapply. There's no grandfathering. That was, you know, Jeff can elaborate on that if we need to. So that kind of clarifies that, that we can't grandfather anybody, but nobody's license is going to get pulled unless there's an infraction of some type.
Go for it. Can I speak to?
Yes.
To that, one of the questions that's come up about where did the percentages come from?
Thank you.
Great question. Some of that has felt arbitrary and staff has insisted for a long time that we don't want to be arbitrary with just coming up with a number. Inevitably, it ends up being a little arbitrary and it's ultimately up to the board to set a number if that's what you decide to do. But in the particular, in the presentation, you noticed that Joel kind of showed you what different percentages would look like reflected in the numbers. The 3% and 5% was aligned with previous discussions with the board where the board was looking at 8 to 9 to 10%. Remembering that, you know, we're currently over 8%. So the 3% plus the 5%, yes, is an eight. But that's excluding all of the primary residents in the in the excluded areas. So absolutely, the board can look at and go, you know, we want to create in a particular area or overall with with an increased percentage there. But we were trying to ensure that in-county had plenty of room to grow. And we were kind of backing into an out-of-county number. So it's it's something for the board to really consider. Where do you want to see that overall number at if you do want to pursue a cap or a series of caps?
Right. Any other clarifying question? Yes, would be.
Well, I agree that the percentage caps seem to be attracting a lot of attention and that we might want to increase those. I mean, I might want to suggest that. Also, another area that seems to be troubling is the idea that people in town or in county can only own one other property, you know, have one other license. So I would think that that'd be another place where I might loosen up that provision so that we do enable people to make more money. Those who live here can make, you know, have that as a greater source of income. And then I like the idea of having a local host listed. I think that could solve a lot of our problems.
We do have that.
Yes.
Application. We do have that. It's a great suggestion, but we do have local contacts for that. It was primarily driven with if there's an emergency and our emergency services have to get into the house, we would prefer not to kick it down and and actually work through a local contact. That was the driver for that, but it has proven very beneficial to have that local contact. That is part of the process.
And Livy, just on that one in the county kind of idea, totally cool with whatever the board wants to do, of course. Just the background on the discussion had to do with, hey, maybe it would incentivize if someone had a house and an ADU on one property, maybe one of those could be long-term rented.
Yeah.
So that, and that's kind of a reminder, and thank you, Joel. This, a lot of what is presented in front of us right now was by the direction of the board. Suggestions by the board, for example, 9%, yeah.
Now I want to figure.
Yeah, was a suggestion. And so, you know, I mean, those are the things to, it's 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 nice to bring it up. Don't get me wrong, but that's what together and said, okay, here's what we heard. Here's what we've got.
I think we're really relatively close to having something that we could put out again and collect more public comment on it.
Okay, so let's, any more clarifying correction for staff? Anything else legal? Okay, I close this portion of the public hearing. Now make that statement, because we're talking to the trustees. Are you, that's what you're suggesting or thinking is maybe more input and continue the public hearing?
Yeah, I would like to make a motion that we continue the hearing, but not for too long. Like maybe 60 days, I mean, essentially into our meeting in maybe our last meeting in October. Does that push it too far? Maybe less than that. September.
Let me open up the public hearing comments, staff.
Well, as you can see in your draft agenda, we have this continuing into the next meeting. Any, I mean, so with, I don't think that that's too soon, if that's what your question is.
Okay.
I think what I would ask the board, knowing that it's late and it sounds like the vibe, the the direction is going to be to continue. I'd like to get some direction for staff so that we're not spinning our wheels kind of guessing what the board would like us to hone in on. So if possible, I'd love to hear what you would like to see for that next public hearing, if possible.
Okay, the other question that comes to mind to me is the process of taking applications and starting to prepare for next year. How soon, what kind of impact, the further we go, obviously. What kind of impact does that going to have on staff?
Um, I think staff has a good process down for renewal and notifications and things like that. It will condense the amount of time for renewals to get completed. So it's really an impact. It is an impact to staff, but it's also an impact to the license holders as well.
Right, everybody involved.
Correct. And and so that would be something to consider if this is pushed into October. Yeah, it condenses that time.
Yeah, starts closing the window, everything we do. And then if there are changes made, it even pushes it down further because then we have an amended ordinance that we bring back to approve, which is 30 days, that you know what I'm saying, it just keeps going.
So our next meeting is the 20, is the 14th of September.
Any questions for staff at this point? I close that portion. Okay. Trustees, do you want to do, and here's what I think obviously we have to think about is a, and I don't know if that's going to work for that meeting, but a work session. Or do you do the board ready to put numbers down? And say, here's where I'm at. Do you want to deliberate on numbers right now? Do you want to do that in a work session? Do you want to, what do you want to do? Are you happy with the numbers? I mean, we have current, currently, I'm speaking, maybe clear out a turn. I want to hear from trustees.
I agree with trustee Faye. I think that intent of what we're doing was was not to restrict what's already here. I think it's to prevent expansion of the industry beyond control or beyond the, you know, proportion to the rest of the housing market. So I do think that we're we're we're, I don't know, 6% sounds sounds better than five just because we are we are operating within the market that is here and it will grow as our housing stock grows. And again, we're not trying to get rid of anything. We're trying to cooperate, collaborate, and it'll be a lot easier to increase the number rather than decrease it later on, for sure. I do wonder about the the one permit per in-town resident that that one that came up a couple of times and it does seem that we might want to poke at that one a little more. But it's my opinion about the numbers.
Other comments?
I personally would mind pushing to a work session. And I understand you guys have done a lot of that already, and I'm new here. But I think listening to a lot of the comments, and this is obviously a big deal and maybe to have another session to think a bit about about it, the numbers and increasing them a little bit and and just kind of expanding on a few things that were brought up tonight wouldn't wouldn't hurt because of the because of what it means for everybody in their own personal ways. My two cents.
Yeah, just encourage you all as we're thinking too. If there's something else that you heard there that you'd like us to noodle on as well, that's not necessarily tied to a number or, you know, or something that's just in the proposal, we can noodle on stuff too. So if there's something, hey, staff, go think about, I heard whatever, whatever. Then so urge you to expand the the comments too. For, I know sometimes it's like you just look at what's in front of you there and it's get focused on that.
And a comment I'll throw out, currently, we're 43 less than what is acceptable licenses in in-county, correct?
County non-primary.
In-county non-primary. So when we're talking percentages, and I know we're talking percentages, the numbers now and say, hey, we're already, we have room for this thing. And there's no limit on in-town primary.
Primary.
Yes.
We do have a limit of only one other license per person.
Per person, and so if there's a couple, they can own two.
If they own them separately, they probably.
Right, 50%, correct? Yeah, 50% on it. Okay, so I'm just throwing things out there just to to rehash and to stir it a little bit and say, okay, so remember, we had some numbers presented and we're under in one area, over in another, and there's no cap in another area. Keeping that in mind, just just kind of throwing that out there. Okay?
Yeah, I'd like to ease that up, that one one additional personally. To have maybe three additional ones or.
Let me close. Okay, deliberation. What thoughts on that, Cindy? What do you have? I know you got notes.
I was just writing down what people said, so I can review later. So what you're saying is a local person could have four.
Right, the one they live in plus three other ones.
So giving them four, my question to Joel would be, would that give them eight? If they were owned by husband and wife, does they split out and could that be, couldn't four be eight?
Depending depending how it's written.
Change that limit from one short-term rental license per applicant to three. Then conceivably, a husband and wife couple, if the property is owned by their name, then each person could apply for for
Three.
theirs and then three others. So it'd be. Theirs and then three others. So it'd be theirs, they'd be both together and then three entries, so it'd be seven.
That's a lot.
Yeah.
Comment, Norm. Go ahead, Cindy, if you've got more.
I'm still thinking.
Sorry, Joel.
I know that we need to grow a little bit, but I'm not in favor of growing a whole lot. And we're gonna go with community feel and I'm not going to be popular out there. But community feel, the people that are living in long term leaders. Those are your softball coaches, your boy scout leaders. They might not spend as much money in the community as people that are coming for short term rentals, but what do they give back to the community in donating of their time? And you started with community feel. Your person that was the long term renter could be your next American Legion commander. They could be the next person that sits on the board. Don't know.
Thank you, Norm. You're thinking?
I think if husband and wife could each own one. Just bumping up to where they could each own two and have four. That seems like a pretty
Let's back over to percentages. You know, there was a comment that, and there again, we're not following anybody's, we're looking at the end of this. What's the county at right now? Staff, does anybody know?
But sorry.
What's the county at right now?
In terms of?
Of number of percentage of houses or percentages of short term rentals.
The the county has a moratorium in place. They are looking to set a cap around six percent or so, or around three hundred units.
Okay.
They will be also looking to probably in the same spirit that we're talking here, try to try to find ways to support local ownership. So I don't know how that will all unfold, but they are under a moratorium, they're not issuing licenses and their intent is to set a cap around six percent.
And if I remember correctly, slide has started at three and ended up at five, am I right?
Three and a half percent. They've put a moratorium in place as well in all their commercial zones with the intent of setting a cap there as well.
Okay, and they haven't decided that number yet.
Have not.
Because the county.
And they have not setting.
So that would just be if if anyone outside.
Outside of municipalities.
Is called, okay.
Any other quite a clarifying questions for staff at this point? Thank you. Deliberation, more. We want to narrow this down so we have something that we can point to staff and say, okay, adjust here, adjust there. Also, and I will interject what Joel said, if there's something, let's say we leave tonight. Let's say this doesn't go anywhere, we're gonna continue the public hearing. If you think of something that somebody said that hits you and you go, wait a minute, I I didn't think of that, and I just now absorbed it or something, relay that to staff so that they can like say, when you think about it and say, okay, this kind of makes sense, this doesn't, or here's what, or we've got it covered. For example, the local contact person is covered. So, you know, I mean, if there's something that comes up that somebody said, keep that in mind and don't be afraid to send an email out. And we want to discuss that. So there's two things we're looking at, percentages still, I think to you, Livy, is a question mark?
Yeah, well, I'm wondering, what if we said six percent for both?
Both what?
For the out of county and the in county.
Out of county is currently five point four eight.
Yeah.
In county is currently point six six with a potential with the three percent cap of and that's only point six six percent of our licenses and there's forty eight, forty three still available. In other words, that is not being captured.
A big one, yeah.
Well, let's just say people haven't gone there. We'll we'll just kind of put it that way.
Yeah, I would.
Knowing that that's an opportunity that may open a door for people, just saying.
I would want to keep them smaller and then if it was to grow outside of that boundary, that was something the board could always adjust. Now, nothing is locked in in stone.
And thank you for saying that. It's a living document.
Yeah.
Uh, slide is rewriting theirs right now.
It is always subject to change, but the real estate people are looking for something that is predictable. And and so they they don't want to hit up against that ceiling right away.
So what is unlimited? The local.
Primary license holder.
Is unlimited, okay.
And there's no, oh, there's no cap.
For those two areas.
But there is a cap if you are in, like if you have more than one short term rental.
There's no percentage cap, but there's a numeric.
Yeah, okay.
The metric.
Maybe six percent out of county and leave it at three percent in county. Because the outer county one is gonna, it's going to absorb all those entities.
Uh, there's currently four entities in the outer county right now. And if they made a change right now, because if they're in town owners or something, they could, it would change that number right there. And with the growth of ha- growth of housing, current growth.
Yes, sir.
How many are we at right now this year?
Total residential?
As as in numbers of permits, single family.
Single family permits right now, a year today, I think we're at thirty nine.
Okay, thank you. That's what I needed. So you can see how that's going to adjust annually. Constantly be grow, growing that number, the percentage is going to remain the same, but the number will increase. Okay, so right now we're to minus nine and and as the number showed in the presentation, it went to you know, five to zero, you know, over so many years. And we've been historically, past two years, we've done a hundred houses a year. So, yeah, so see, it kind of, kind of sort of, you look at those numbers and obviously we're a little slow, just here in the thirty nine right now. We're a little slow this year, but that doesn't mean next year won't be a hundred and and that window starts closing number of available homes, all of a sudden grows, which gives you more houses per section. Does that make sense? Yeah.
Which we do have some pretty good projects hanging out there.
Yep, yep. So, and and, you know, I'm I'm asking for input. Everything we got, it sounds like we're probably going to continue this.
Yeah.
I have no issue with that. I think we need to, there again, I want to narrow this down for staff.
I have another concern.
Yes.
Which is back to the licensing of a house.
Staff.
Versus, you know, room one, room two. Is that possible that we could go with just one license for the building? Keep our percentages a lot cleaner.
We can definitely look, look at that. Yeah.
And if I'm thinking this is right, it's easier to police per advertised room than it is what you're saying. Because Grant has to go by what he sees, and if somebody does something out here, it's easier for him to chase it down. So this person could on this website be listing the house and over here he could have two rooms in another.
We we will capture that point and investigate it. I need fresh
Okay.
Fresh thoughts on how that correlates to how units can be in a house that can be advertised, because you you don't want that to just expand to as many rooms as there is in the house with only one license. So we need to recognize how that.
Oh, yeah, and then the rules, it has two, two rooms, right?
Okay, and we're four per couple currently. That's agreed upon for at this point, four per couple, primary. Okay. Percentage. Are we
Six and three.
Kind of locked in where we are, sounds good, because of the growth factor, I mean, that's constantly going to increase number. What do you think, Gina?
I mean, the fact of, you know, what Devin said, that this isn't set in stone is I mean, my concerns, I guess, when I think about this stuff is, you know, the infrastructure of the of the town, what we can handle. Things that, well, how many people can come in? I understand the benefit of the financial side and everything like that, but you know, or how how do things, how we, heck, I think we get through stoplight soon or in a couple of years, which might be exciting, but there's so many other layers to the onion, I guess people would put it, and so I'm glad this isn't something that can be set in stone, as long as there's flexibility, I'm I'm happy with that, but I I I don't want to you know, say, hey, let's shoot for the moon and go crazy, I want to be smart about it, and so and as you had, what you had said with the community feel and making sure residents here full time feel very comfortable with the growth as well, so.
And I appreciate you bringing up infrastructure. Because that's a comment that hasn't really been chased too much here, and that's our amount of water we have available.
Water.
And if you throw an A D U on every piece of property, that's more water than is counted in our actual. I, you know, those are just things to think of, and I like to say, I appreciate that. Granted, it's not etched in stone, so it can always be flexible data.
How do we measure the success of whatever policy we come up with? I mean, I I understand the arbitrary, you know, there's there's certain certain arbitrariness to any percentage we put on there. How do we measure whether we got it right or got it wrong is is what I, but I don't.
There's always going to be a question. For example, the question came up, how do you measure the revenue that's brought in by this? There's no way to separate. There's no way to separate, there's no way of knowing. Has our tax increased for the past how many years?
Yeah.
Sure has. But it was in increasing before the turn S T R.
Right.
So, you know, how do you say, oh, it's all short term rentals that brought it in? Well, I I can't go there. We know, I can't say, oh, that's a percentage of it, but uh, we tried to, seems to me like we tried to slice off other things and there's just no way to track it, there's just no way to track it.
Better way to ask that question, how do we know if we're doing it wrong? I don't I don't know if that's an appropriate question for, same, same thing.
We don't put in a third stoplight, we don't. You know, I don't know, I, you know, that's always, unfortunately.
Guys all come back and they.
Unfortunately, that's why we sit at this table, you know, and you make these kind of policy decisions and they were, God, you know. I don't have a crystal ball.
I think if we're doing nothing, then we're doing it wrong.
Yeah.
Thank you. To do nothing is really, all you're doing is watching it happen. You get rolled over, okay?
And if we set a percentage, it can always be changed.
Right, can always be changed. Everything is is, it's all are living documents, everything we do, another board can actually wipe this out and walk away, and we have four new people coming in in April twenty twenty two.
All right.
And Norm.
Right.
We said, if we said a a five and a four or four and a five, we could change it in six months.
Exactly. Anything can be changed by this board, anything can be changed. And so, and and it's saying the same concept, you can leave it the way it is and change it for six months.
Right. But I think the.
We have seen a big increase in the past two months.
Yeah.
That's what's interesting. It's really spiked.
I think the important thing is that this is something that we have created as a board, it's not staff creating it for us, something that we've been working on this last year, and the the bones are ours. There are bones and the staff has done an excellent, excellent job of filling in the rest of the body of this. But I think it's a really important to reiterate that, that this has been a lot of work and and I feel like looking at this document, you know, these little tweaks and percentages here or numbers here and there are good, but it's not like we're we're over it or you don't want to do anything, so.
Right, exactly. I, you know, and and thank you for bringing that up again, everything and and I said it before, everything that they have presented to us is what we have suggested or requested. Staff has worked on this for, well, it, you know, it goes way back, I'm sorry, you know, it didn't just there's been a lot of comments about it's been too quick. It's, this board has had this in front of us a lot of times.
Yeah, and and we've heard a lot tonight from the short term rentals side, but I've heard a lot from the other side where, you know, friends have been kicked out of their houses because it's not a long term rental anymore, it's a short term rental. People, a lot of my friends and people I know in this town have got pushed out. And whether that's all short term rentals or all just the housing influx or whatnot, but I know many, many people that have been kicked out of their places because they've been sold or converted or changed. And, you know, I don't know, I keep thinking about the Lorax. I always loved the Lorax, but just how in the book by Dr. Stu's, everything keeps getting bigger and bigger and bigger, and that's what we want, we want more and more and more, but then at the end, what do we have? So, you know, that's something that's real important to think about and to remember is that we don't want to stifle our economy. We also want to have a town with an economy, not an economy without a town. And I just think about, you know, this summer, how there's been, you know, hours waits at the restaurants. Restaurants closing, businesses closing multiple days during the week, which I haven't seen before, which we haven't seen before. And it's hard to make it here, and I think about that all the time, and I know a lot of my friends and coworkers do too, so. I think this is a good step in the direction and not everyone's going to agree with what we do, but I think we have to do something. Like, I don't want to kick it down road for like a few months, you know, I'm okay with pushing it like another month, but I don't want to wait till end of October, I want to keep it refreshing what we're we're doing here.
You know, and one thing, and if you don't mind, Devin, I'd like to say your income is towards.
It is, yeah.
And to hear what you just said from you means a lot.
Yeah.
That means a lot.
I'm full, like, I don't need more work in the summer, I'm done, like, it's busy. So, but it's hard to, hard to stay here. So.
Okay, Norm, you've got something.
Well, we can either continue this on, or we could put like a four percent, four percent, would the subject change? Correct?
Yeah, we can, and actually, we can amend this whole concept right here with, I'm hearing two per person. Primary. Correct? So that would be four per family. Staff, is that correct?
Two per applicant.
Two per applicant.
And
So as a couple could have four.
County non-primary.
Primary.
Primary is unlimited right now.
But it can only have one per person.
So you get the primary and then they get two others. Each of them gets two others, so they could have a total of of five. One that they supposedly live in, the two of them, and then four others.
Is that acceptable?
I think so, yeah.
Okay, so we're trying to get something we can either pass tonight or we want to see it in in next meeting. Okay, that's where I'm going right now. So that we give staff direction. And the board is comfortable with what we come up, okay? So that would be one plus two plus two is what you're saying. Libby, that would give five total primary. Right?
Right, yeah.
That make sense, Steph? Um, they can have one as.
Primary.
Yep, one is a primary and then two per fifty percent ownership. So that would give them a total of five. Talk to me, Joe.
If you are, um, if you don't have, if you live in your pri- primary, you don't short, short term, short-term rental it, and you're in the county somewhere, can you still then do two per applicant? Right?
Yeah.
All right. In a word, yeah, so we'll just, it would just be a change to the in-counties, as it's described, in-county non-primary, you have two per applicant. And so that'll cover the primary residents. We get the one and then it covers the other scenarios, whether or not you rent your primary residence.
Is that your intention?
Yeah.
If, if people have more than one right now, are they restricted or no?
The licenses, the, my understanding, the licensing, current licensing does not change number-wise. So if they currently have an SDR.
Or they have.
They're not guaranteed, but if they apply again, they will, they can get it again.
One person or LLC has five right now, which would be more than our cap because they already have them right now, then.
They can, correct me if I'm wrong, they can still reapply.
Right, they probably have to change who, who applies, like the applicant.
Um, yeah.
So if I, yeah, Joe.
Yeah, the, the new regulations are, are gonna govern. So whatever the numeric limitations are in the new licensing scheme, that's gonna govern what they can have. And just, just so you were clear though, like LLCs get to have treated like out of county or out of, yeah, out of county residents. But there's no limitation on how many LLCs one person can have. So.
There's a, there's someone in town with like three different LLCs and three different licenses.
Oh, because each.
Simple.
So each one. I don't think that's the direction you were going though. Because you were looking at primary.
Yeah, yeah.
Not at, not in county.
But it makes sense to keep moving to that. Um, is the in-county residents, I mean, it seems like they would go for the two also.
Okay, um, let's do, I would entertain a motion to continue the public hearing. Number one. Um, I would entertain a motion to continue public hearing.
The move.
Thank you. Second, we have a first to second Faye. Further discussion?
The date determined?
Yeah.
Yes, we will. Um, second meeting, two meetings from now.
September twenty-eighth.
Okay. So that we have the opportunity to have a work session?
Before, at six that day?
Uh, not that day, the meeting before.
Okay.
Excellent. So that we can make some decisions and it can be put into a.
Work, work session on the fourteenth.
Yeah.
Yes.
Um, can, can the board be flexible? Cause we, we're kicking off budget. We're, we're doing several things kind of all at once. Would the board be flexible to have a non-meeting night work session? So like Monday?
And or an agenda item? Yeah, talk to me.
Or, yeah.
Because I, I think we're at a point we can narrow down quick, I hope. Instead of needing a full hour to discuss a, a percentage, a number of people, a, you know what I'm saying? And I think, um, you think legal, legal should be involved. I mean, I'm thinking Jeff should be involved.
Fifteen, that's good. Sixteen.
And you're talking budget next meeting?
We were kicking off having a work session.
I'm gonna keep that on schedule. That's something we don't want to play with.
What are we talking about in the work session?
Okay, um, we have the question of how many primary resident licenses and the way Joel presented it was in-county licenses. That is two different things in my opinion. Does that make sense to everybody else involved? I mean, I did, I, you know, I heard primary here and then I heard Joel say in-county prime would take care of primary. And I go, wait a minute, that's two different things. You're wanting to not limit, oh, wait a minute, further discussion.
Oh.
Yeah, let's, let's, uh, we'll pick a date, uh, Philip.
How about Mayor and I work on a work session date?
Okay.
We're gonna go date specific, the second meeting and, no, two meetings from now, which would be.
September twenty-eighth.
Thank you. Okay, date specific to September twenty-eighth. That is the continuation of the public hearing.
Okay.
Okay, so I have a motion as second. Do you have both of those, Paula?
Uh huh.
Okay, roll call vote.
Mr. Faye, yes. Mr. McQueen, yes. Mr. Nyberg, yes. Mr. Bro.
Yes.
Mr. Swisher.
Yes.
Mr. Fluffy, yes.
Hey, thank you. Now, direction for staff. Percentage or no change? Cause we want that in the document.
I would say yes.
And we had, um, I think, Norm, you said, did you say four and four or, or what did you say? Five and five? Four and four. You said four and four. Which, um, would change it to a minus twenty-seven.
Yeah.
On the outside.
Think you're gonna get a lot of.
There's word of minus nine right now at five percent. Correct?
Yeah, I don't think.
Joe.
If, if I may, uh, suggest, maybe we can come together with some, some charts, you know, some graphs and data. And then you guys can kind of, uh, from what we've heard, you know, kind of trying to take some of that info, like the primary, non-primary, put them in the, uh, kind of a use table.
Yep.
We can add things like the four and the four and the three and the five and different things. And then you guys can have that data and be looking at it with fresh eyes.
Yes.
At that time.
Let's do that. We'll pick a, we'll find a date.
Yep.
See what we can make work. Does that sound good for anybody? It's in.
Okay. When we have a negative number, if you're looking at a negative number, they don't lose the license. They just don't get to grow the licenses. Is that correct?
That's what we were contemplating is.
Okay.
Retriction and through other means that number will drop down or through growth.
And the only thing that.
Stuff is.
Yes, go ahead.
Okay.
And the only thing that would change, as Jeff pointed out, is the entities. Because of what we're changing on the number of entities that would change. That's the only thing. Am I correct? That would change number-wise. Um, if we adopt the new.
Jeff, I, let me just ask you to clarify, were you speaking on, um, if there was a limitation on how many licenses one individual could have? If there's an existing uh, scenario where an individual has five, which I don't think that's the case. But what you're saying is the new ordinance would force that person back down to one?
Y- y- yeah, I'd be as currently drafted. I mean, I guess it would depend upon, you know, the status of the person and whether they're a resident or a not, not resident. But, uh, and whether it's a primary home or not, but y- yeah. Um, they would have to basically comply with the new licensing across, unless you made a revision to, you know, basically grandfather people in who have existing rentals like that. Or they would have to basically change the ownership ship structure. So it's owned by, you know, LLC because there's essentially no limitation on the number of LLCs a person could create to own these properties.
In, uh, can I also maybe?
Yes.
If we, um, bring back some charts and things and maybe there's some other, um, ideas that we've kind of been hearing and maybe we'll bring those forward. This is.
Yeah, that's what I'm thinking. You're hearing so much right now. It's like, okay, let's, let's see what the percentages do. Let's put those side by side. Let's see what numbers per primary will do. Let's see what that does. Let's go with the entity concept. What is that going to change? How does that factor? Okay, we satisfied with kind of that information coming back. Um, we'll talk Philip and see if that'll work agenda or if we're gonna have to go, um, work session. And then we may have tried to pick a date.
Okay.
Yeah, I'm lost now.
Not here.
Call for vote. For the motion to continue the date certain.
I think we did do that. Yeah, a roll call. That's right. You blink. We're fast. I think we got it, Paula.
Did, and maybe we take a five-minute break?
Do we want a five-minute break? I know, I'm ready, man.
That's a doozy.
Welcome.
Yes.
Show tonight.
You can see it. I'm glad somebody can see it.
Well, we're gonna work.
Yeah, we did it.
Fix it.
Short-term rental.
Sorry, we're back on there.
That's right. Do I need to do that again?
Uh, I think you're good.
Jeff?
Oh, he's gone. It's, I mean, so. Uh, I'll read it again.
Pull it out, yeah.
Uh, next item is a public hearing amending sections, chapter sixteen of the Unified Development Code regarding definitions related to short-term rentals, adoption, ordinance number twelve, series twenty-twenty-one, entitled, in ordinance amending certain sections of Unified Development Code concerning definitions of type of structures and definite short-term rentals. We got it now. And is Mark running with this all the way?
Yes.
Yes, sir.
Right, Mark.
Thank you. I'm gonna be brief on this. So on, in your packet on page one twenty is the staff report. On page one twenty-three is the draft planning and zoning commission. So the reason why I note that is we had that meeting for, in front of the planning and zoning commission last Wednesday on the, uh, I can't remember the date, the eighteenth. So the planning and zoning commission has not approved those minutes. So they still need to do that at their next meeting. Um, that's why they're draft, but they're included in your packet for their discussion. So you can see it. And then on page one hundred and twenty-seven is the draft ordinance with the amendments that the planning and zoning commission made. So really quick, we are, uh, amending definitions and adding definitions to our code so that we can have a good definition for short-term rental. Quickly, we are adding a definition of apartment. We didn't have a definition of apartment in our Unified Development Code. Um, we're adding a definition of residential structure, mixed-use structure, non-residential structure. We are defining rooming unit. Um, and that has some amendments that the planning and zoning commission has made. Um, and then there is the actual definition of short-term rental. Um, so why are we doing this? We need to have a little bit better clarity. We use the term habitable spaces, which isn't defined in our code. So we're creating a definition to separate it away from the building code, which has definitions of habitable spaces, which I won't get into, because it doesn't relate to what we're talking about. We are proposing to change the term habitable spaces to rooming units. Um, and the planning and zoning commission wanted clarity on what a rooming unit was. So we further added language with respect to, um, kitchens that are potentially in a rooming unit. So in other words, you can have a rooming unit with a kitchen, but it does not have to have a kitchen. And in our code currently, we have definitions of what makes up a kitchen or an accessory dwelling unit. So the planning and zoning commission wanted to refer to that so that if you have a rooming unit, let's say you're renting out a room in a house, it does not have to have a kitchen. And that's perfectly fine. What we don't want is people building rooming units with a kitchen and just calling it a kitchen because that could be a dwelling unit. So we are in our definition of rooming unit. Um, have, you can't have that and have it convert back to an ADU without going through our ADU process. So some, some technical stuff, but we need that to define what it is. And then the definition of short-term rental is amended for the term rooming unit. And just would note, part of the reason why we have the numbers of rooming units in the short-term rental is under our current code, a short-term rental has no more than two rooming units. So whether it's an entire house or two separate rooms rented out to two different individuals. Soon as you get three or more, you either are bed and breakfast or a hotel. And what we're trying to prevent with that specific definition is that people turning houses into hotels, they have a five-bedroom house with one license, that they don't have now a five-bedroom hotel that are rented out to five different people. So that that's the reason why we have that proposed definition as it's stated in the code. And with that, I'll be fairly brief and ask if you have questions for staff to clarify.
And so the, the separation there is the individual, individual room to individual person.
Correct.
As compared to five rooms to one family.
Correct.
Gotcha. Okay, thank you.
So if we're not trying to have a five-bedroom house rented out to five different people, you have the ability to rent that house out to five individuals as one rental unit.
So what does that prevent?
It prevents a house of five bedrooms being turned into five separate rental units. So it doesn't become a hotel.
But if one person rents the house, they could have, this couple is coming, this couple is coming, this couple is coming, and that is okay.
Yes.
Okay.
So if I'm gonna do a short-term rental in my house, which has four bedrooms, I need to rent it to Libby so that she can rent each room. Because I can't. That's what you're saying. Is that what he said?
No.
Okay, I missed it then. It went up.
So.
What time is it? Okay. I mean, that's what I heard.
Right, so Doug, here's the clarification.
Okay.
If you have a four-bedroom house.
Yes.
You can rent that out to one group at one time, whether it's four unrelated folks, whatever, but it's one rental. So.
They all supposedly know each other, basically. Okay.
You're not renting out to four people who don't know each other and they each get their own rooming unit.
Okay, but if, okay. Oh, I'm, you know, I always think the dark side. So I could get four licenses though and rent each room. Isn't that what we were talking about in short-term rentals? Am I right? Did I miss something? Okay, I'm not voting. Forget what I just said. One license.
License, you can, um.
At my whole house.
Rent the whole house to one group, not.
Four families.
Separate rooms of four different people.
But who's gonna keep me from doing that? I'm just saying, I, I'm, I'm just.
On how you.
You're advertising four rooms.
Four units.
Okay.
Our code enforcement's gonna catch that.
Okay, so, but if I had four licenses, could I not do that? Isn't that what we just talked about previously?
Yeah, I don't know if.
Yeah, am I wrong?
We briefly talked about it at the very first of the discussion, you know, getting clarification on that renting of two rooms versus one room and how many licenses that you can have.
Right.
So it was briefly discussed in the previous conversation, but it was never really clarified where we wanted.
That's kind of where I'm at right now. I'm going, okay, so.
The news, the new proposal doesn't allow you to have.
Do that.
Four rental units in one structure. So you couldn't have four licenses.
Okay, I couldn't have four licenses.
Right, right, right.
And that's what Libby's talking about, giving a primary the ability to get two licenses or three. Could I do it in the same house?
No.
Okay, that, that makes, make sure we get that clarified when that comes up in our work session, whatever ordinance. Cause I, in my mind, I'm going, well, if I get four licenses, I can rent each room in my house and I have four bedrooms. You see where I'm going with that?
I see where you're going with that. And the answer to that, under the current code.
It would be a hotel.
If you have three or more rooming units, you are a bed and breakfast. You're not classified as a short-term rental.
Okay.
Or a hotel.
Thank you.
And in some zone districts, bed and breakfast may be allowed or may not be allowed, but it's a different use under the code.
Okay.
Just for the point of clarification, if I roll over into that bed and breakfast category, as the host, am I required to provide some type of breakfast to be in compliance with that definition?
The definition of bed and breakfast says it may include, but is not. The definition of bed and breakfast says it may include, but is not necessary to have a breakfast.
And what you have to have a.
I only have to have a business license.
Caretaker there.
Oh, you do? Okay, but.
What's the catch?
But you don't have to have a short term rental license. You just have a business license.
If it's allowed in that zone district, there may be some.
Right. I mean, that would be our two.
Don't allow for.
Or M, our new code is, whatever. Okay.
There's a bed and breakfast, big commercial taxes, and a short term rental is just paying residential. So if you've got your license for the bed and breakfast, it would change your tax.
So I think my breakfast is still a residential.
It's still residential.
Question, this taxing is a county slash.
That's something else. Yeah.
Okay.
Hotel would push you.
And yes, yes. But if you are there again, caretaker, or you live there and you have four rooms, let's say five, then it's still, according to the county, you still live there, so therefore it's residential. If you don't live there, then it becomes a commercial property.
Okay.
As a point to clarify, just so everyone knows, short term rentals are not allowed on commercial property, but we allow hotels and we allow bed and breakfasts. Because we do not want businesses turning into short term rentals unless they're a hotel or a bed and breakfast.
We've been asked that question many a time.
I'm sorry I brought that up. I really.
That's all right. That's important clarification. That's why I figured I would start with that.
Okay, good. Any other questions for Mark? Clarifying. Besides the muddy water I just made. I mean, I know what you're saying. It just raised the question of what we talked about in short term rentals, and that's kind of what you said.
Guys have questions about that?
It makes sense what you're saying now when you put it all in context.
Yeah, I try and provide context for you. So if you still have questions, we can.
Okay.
Continue.
Other questions for Mark? Because basically what we're doing here is a lot of definitions.
Correct. You write down our Unified Development Code. We don't actually have a definition for apartments. And that.
And, and then as, as I look at this ordinance, we have some costs outs and things like that. Those will all be adjusted and in the original document, those will all go away. Am I correct?
Correct. That's why we have those that didn't strike through in the ordinance.
Gotcha. Okay.
So part, part of that is what kind of structures are eligible for short term rentals? So if you look at the definition of a residential structure.
Yes.
It's capable of being used for the domicile purpose, persons, excuse me. So part of that is you can't get a short term rental on a shed. You can't get a short term rental on your backyard. It has to be a structure that is capable of housing people. We have had people try to house people in sheds in this community.
No, they, they didn't try. They were.
They did.
Yeah, I was being done.
Sheds, sheds are meant for housing tools, not people.
Uh, questions for Mark? Understanding that a lot of this is definition. A lot of this is definition change, which we had to clarify.
Thank you, Mark.
You're welcome.
Chapter sixteen, definitions, public hearing. I open this portion of the meeting to public comment. If there is anyone who would like to make a public comment, please step forward, state your name and address.
So the bar go for twenty-five Cedar Street. I just still have a hard time understanding your definition of kitchen and you said, not what it says in this definition. A, okay, a rooming unit, type of housing accommodation that consists of a room or group of rooms for rental space arranged primarily for sleeping and study that may include a private bath and countertop cooking devices such as a microwave or a hot plate, but does not include any requirements for an ADU. And what I heard you just say was, I thought that you can have a kitchen, but you don't have to have a kitchen. But that's not what this says. It says it does not include any elements of a kitchen. My question to you is, if you're gonna let somebody have a microwave and a hot plate, why would you not let them have a sink and a fridge? That just doesn't make sense to me.
Okay, so is that your public comment? Because we will close that portion of comment, public comment, and allow staff to.
Okay.
Go ahead. Go on. Yes.
Short term rentals, residential structure or portion thereof, in which the entire structure or two or fewer rooming units within a single structure are made available to paying guests. Again, it ties back to the kitchen. What happens if you're not, if you don't want them to have a kitchen for a rooming unit, you don't want them to have a kitchen in a rooming unit? What happens with houses that have two kitchens already?
Is that, there again, is that your?
That is my comment. I have questions, my comments, I guess.
Anyone else like to make a public comment? I close this portion of public hearing, public comment. Staff, would you like to respond?
Yeah, just real quick. I didn't know if there was anyone on Zoom.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Just wanna make sure we catch everybody if there's.
Did you have anyone, Michael?
Don't have anyone on Zoom. No.
Okay, thank you very much. Philip? Mike, or excuse me.
Mark.
Mark?
Wait a minute, you need alignment.
Okay, so, so part of the, why we're trying to clarify that? Because you can rent out a single room in your house. It's your house with your kitchen. No problem. That's ninety-nine point nine percent of the scenario that we have. We have houses with kitchen. So you can rent out the entire house with the kitchen to a group. They can certainly use that. What we don't want is people building in a separate unit, like an ADU, but not gonna use that term for right now, building, let's say, a space above a garage that is bedrooms, bathroom, and a kitchen, because that's an accessory dwelling. That's how we would divide it. There's regulations with respect to an ADU. And if you don't have a kitchen, then it's not an ADU. You can certainly have a microwave and a hot plate, because those are things that you can plug into an outlet. Just like you can plug in a microwave and a hot plate in anyone's office or anyone's business. What, when you start getting to those elements that make up a kitchen, those are things that need inspection and permits to install things like gas first, oh, two twenty first, oh, a sink needs plumbing. Those kind of elements. So you can have a space that is a use for a short term rental, but it cannot be used as an ADU if it doesn't have a kitchen.
But we can go vice versa. You can take a, a structure that has a kitchen can be used as a short term rental.
Yes, the house, if you're renting an entire house to someone.
Or an entire.
You can certainly rent that to.
Right, okay.
But what we don't want is people building new short term rental units and then having them try to make that an ADU, because an ADU has minimum requirements for a kitchen, which include a kitchen sink, a fridge of at least six cubic feet, a, a s- oven, and a, at least two burgers.
And what is, and also in there a minimum size on an ADU?
There is a max.
Maximum size.
An ADU of eight hundred fifty square feet. And then there are required elements for the bathroom, a toilet.
Right.
At least a shower. So those are all elements that are required that you have to meet as a minimum to be an ADU. The other element of an ADU is it, particularly when they're detached, you have to plumb to that and you're adding more water on our system. And you pay for that additional tap at the rate of a quarter of your meter for your property. So we're trying to prevent people building rooming units and then having the ability to convert them to an accessory dwelling without going through the ADU.
Through the process, yes, through, through all of the code and all of that. Yes. Clear, clear on that, trustees?
Sounds good.
Good, okay. Um, any other clarifying questions for staff? Close this portion of the public hearing. Trustees, questions, comments, motion?
I would make a motion to approve ordinance number twelve.
Right here.
Now, first and second, further discussion. And as I reiterated, all you're, all we're pointing out in there by the crossed out lines is the definition, clarification of the definition.
Yeah, in section two, the proposed ordinance was crossing out habitable spaces and replacing that with rooming units, which is the italicized font.
And then that will, will that remain in the, the ordinance, or will that be changed?
When they publish the ordinance in our code, that habitable space will be addressed, will be removed, and all the italicized text, which is new, will be added in.
Thank you. Um, any other? I would, uh, roll call, please.
Trustee Fay?
Yes.
Trustee Luquezi?
Yes.
Trustee Nyberg?
Yes.
Trustee Rowe?
Yes.
Trustee Swisher?
Yes.
Trustee Bopie?
Yeah.
Thank you all very much. Thank you, Mark, for the time you put in on that. And Ian Z. Thank you very much. Uh, next item, item F, moratorium on accepting short term rental applications. Uh, adoption ordinance number thirteen, series twenty twenty-one, and emergency ordinance imposing temporary moratorium on the accepted processing and approval of any application for short term rental license within the town. Philip?
Yes.
Joe?
Okay, take a swing. So, uh, quick and apologize for the first typo, but the, um, because of the amount of time and et cetera that we're taking to discuss and visit all these and, um, the potential, you know, I said fifty percent, uh, increase in short term rentals in the last couple of months, as we sort of talk about this. So we're just asking for, um, temporary moratorium until, um, October twenty-seventh, set to expire then, which will be the day after our meeting. Just to have, uh, this moratorium where we're not accepting applications and so that we can use our staff to focus on writing and crafting instead of processing applications and things. And that two month is set. It's going, you know, the wording says it's gonna, um, expire naturally unless there's some kind of a further action by the, by the board. So the board can say, hey, let's get rid of this moratorium before then, or, or extend it, or do some other action. So. So that's a request is for two months, essentially two month temporary moratoriums, so we can focus on getting things together and crafting sort of process.
Okay, and will we have a similar moratorium at the adoption of the quote new short term rental? So that again, because it takes thirty days to take effect, what we want to do another thirty day moratorium.
Good. It just kind of depends on where, when that, uh, adoption is.
Gotcha.
Adoption. So, so yeah, you would adjust.
When we.
Or you can change this.
Or we can change this one.
Right.
Yeah, amend this one.
Just to acknowledge that, that we have had, um, I don't know the quantity, but we've had, we've had a, a few, maybe multiple attempts to, uh, turn in applications, uh, under direction from our legal department. Staff basically said, we're no longer taking applications during this time when an ordinance is being considered. And so that, that became effective August eleventh, I think, August twelfth, sometime around there. I mean, um, so, so obviously there, I think you heard a little bit of it tonight where people a little angst because we, we did say, no, we're on pause. We're, we're waiting for the board to decide on, on this, this ordinance and proposal. So, so there is that. Um, it's not uncommon. And, and again, as I, as I mentioned tonight, Saliva, Salida, and the county are in moratoriums for this purpose as well. So it's, it's not, um, uncommon, but it does create a little uncertainty, certainly for people that were looking to turn in an application right now.
So I think Poncho is also.
Uh, Poncho is no longer accepting out of county.
They're done.
They do not license out of county.
Yeah, and I, I was gonna say, I think they put a moratorium straight out anyways.
No, it's not a moratorium.
I mean, you know, for a license. And I hate to say it, but for anybody who'd point fingers at us now. You know, I'm tired of pointing fingers. We're, we're working on stuff here. You know, I, I just, that irritates me. But anyway, we gotta.
I'll make the motion.
Thank you, Norm.
Ordinance number thirteen.
And then I heard a second.
That's probably.
Okay, further discussion. Roll call vote.
Trustee Fay?
Yes.
Trustee Luquezi?
Yes.
Trustee Nyberg?
Yes.
Trustee Rowe?
Yes.
Trustee Swisher?
Yes.
And Trustee Bopie?
Yes.
I'm glad we're done with public hearings. Next item on the agenda is a moratorium on accepting applications for condominium, condominiumization of existing buildings, adoption of ordinance number fourteen, series twenty twenty-one, entitled, an emergency ordinance imposing a temporary moratorium on the acceptance and processing and approval of any app- application for the condominiumization of existing buildings within the town.
Thank you. Um, thank you. And, and we can bring up a map if you, if you want. This is a, um, talking about housing, talking about the conversion of apartments to condominiums that are then short term rental. This is a, we've been talking about getting some kind of a code in place to protect situations like, uh, the W Village going into just short term rentals instead of the, you know, entry level housing things. But we just haven't had the time, um, to pull this together. We're requesting, uh, because there's some some properties that could, that could happen. They're being, you know, transferred, um, bought, sold, et cetera. And let's give us till February or sooner, so we can craft a good code that will, um, help keep apartments as apartments instead of as condos. So that, that's what this request is, uh, just to get a temporary moratorium so we can, um, have time to craft it.
Make the motion to accept ordinance number fourteen.
Resolution.
Resolution number fourteen.
Second.
Actually, it says ordinance.
Oh, it's a, all right, sorry.
Change it.
That's crazy.
That's right, Norm, you were right. And we had a second Fay. Am I correct?
Who made the second?
Did you second it?
Yeah, okay. Ordinance number fourteen.
That scared me. I thought I jumped the gun there. Uh, further discussion. And one thing that I do, oh, just further discussion.
Just really quick, but just so that not only the board understands, but anyone that may be listening in the audience in here or in.
Eleven o'clock.
Or in Zoom.
Nobody's listening, Mark.
Well. Apartments are when one person owns property and they own the entire property. A condominium is when you take a building and you create individual ownerships so that each person owns their own unit. Apartments, one person owns twenty. Condos, twenty different people own twenty. Just, just saying, I say.
And to point out, this is temporary. That's another thing. Um, and if anybody questions, it's because of, and if you want to get into it, housing availability. It's really what it boils down.
Yes.
Roll call vote, please.
Okay, Trustee Fay?
Yes.
Yes. Trustee Nyberg?
Yes.
Trustee Rowe?
Yes.
Trustee Swisher?
Yes.
Trustee Bopie?
Yes.
Thank you all very much. And I was hoping Michelle fell asleep.
We have, we have hope.
So, so I've asked, I've asked staff to keep them short. Sorry.
Well, this is a quarterly.
Yep, questions?
Michelle?
There it is. Questions?
You're, you're on.
You just did it.
You just did it.
I know questions.
That helps.
Let's get, let's get it all out of the way.
There it is.
Okay.
Questions? Can you hear me?
Yeah, we heard it.
Oh, okay. Um, sales tax is doing good, balance sheet balances, the projected fund balances is good. Um, do you want me to go into more detail? As always, you're awesome.
Where's the bar graph is great, yeah.
It's amazing, because, um, uh, June is higher than any month has ever been. On this graph.
Yeah, and it's usually July, so we'll see next month.
Could be interesting.
Ooh. Yeah.
COVID, quite surpassive.
Yeah. So I I'm more than happy to answer questions. If there's anything that's not obvious, I hate to I hate to, um, keep you up later than you need to be up. But this is my position is the end of the night and everybody's falling asleep anyway.
So is the new, the new land that we bought, is that in the column for Water Enterprise Fund?
Yes.
Under fixed assets?
Uh, no. Hmm, on the balance sheet, you mean?
Yeah. In that ten million nine hundred fifty nine thousand dollar number.
No.
No.
I typically book assets at the end of the year.
Oh.
Um, and run a full year depreciation on them, and there will be some depreciation on on the ranch because there's buildings and stuff.
So where is it on the balance sheet then?
It's not, it's not been booked yet.
Oh.
I mean, it it would be it would be in the P and L because we expended the the funds, but the asset hasn't been um, placed in service on the books.
Okay. All right.
Thanks, Libby.
Any other questions for Michelle? I knew exactly where it was, Michelle, you and I, I'm gonna ask.
Find the rest.
Uh, thank you, Michelle, it's, uh, I don't know, it's just amazing. Everything just keeps going, doesn't it?
Yep.
Crazy, crazy. Um, if you see anything.
I'm gonna find it.
Ring it up to Michelle.
Okay.
Um, thank you, Michelle.
Thank you.
We appreciate everything you do.
Yeah.
Philip gets paid.
Had to go somewhere.
Saying, had to go somewhere.
He runs a tight ship.
Yeah, there you go.
Oh, that's right, we get paid. Dragged a deposit, I never see it.
Okay, town administrator.
Uh, I'm gonna be paying Joel after tonight. Um, so.
You mean, you work for free?
Yeah, I was volunteering this whole time.
Now it's out.
Think of a stipend. Uh, there's my report, any questions? There was actually quite a quite fit in here, but um, I, I will say that we're, we're very excited to to bring Joseph Tybl on board, uh, starting September first. Um, he gets to join the fun. But man, what a, what a, um, addition to our team. It's gonna be a, a, a great, a great addition. So, uh, we did, uh, Shawna Martinez, I do want to point that out. She did, she did resign. Um, she's taken on a new position. She managed our wildland program. And as you know, we retained that from our fire department transition. So, uh, we have some work to do to decide how we might want to backfill that. Um, it's a great program to bring in some additional revenue for us. Um, but, uh, it's, it's not something that I can have Michelle take over, right? We've got to find somebody with experience. We do have a lead with somebody that you all are familiar with, uh, but we need to continue that discussion. So I'm hopeful that we'll be able to continue the program.
Will that be a part time position, you think?
It might be a contract.
Oh, gotcha.
Okay. COVID still around, yeah, you know that, uh, we might be, uh, public health is asking us to implement, uh, wearing masks in public facilities. I think the county in Salida have started this. I'll take the lead on that, um, and when we decide to do that perhaps, but, uh, you know, again, we're, it'll be kind of how we running in town hall and different things, but we, we do need to probably discuss how we want that setup to work if, if things do start progressing more towards that. Um, it's great to have the public here, but we want to make sure that we're not making, making bad things.
And we did do a six foot spacing once.
Yeah.
So it's count up, does it count up in the county?
Uh, it had, it had been climbing. It stabilized at the time I was writing this report, and so it was kind of like things might be okay, but at the same time, public health asked us to.
Yeah.
It's kind of inching up.
For a day.
Yeah, and and with school starting, I think we all agree that that's the priorities to protect our kids and teachers and parents to make sure that that's successful. So. And staff. And staff. And administration, uh, yeah.
So more tomorrow.
Well, yes.
Yes.
We'll, we'll work towards that. Um, and then I had some highlight there, sorry.
Um, I, I saw there the, uh, water treatment, or excuse me, intake September ninth? Five thirty?
Yes. The water tour.
Schedule. We're gonna go tour the water facilities.
Yeah.
September ninth, five thirty in town hall.
Right around on a little bus and get food.
Gina, we'll meet and I'll. I'll set you up on all that. Don't stress right now. Uh, yeah, and so the fire station, so Chris Green did a great job finishing a lot of that transition of equipment and things. He's off to the academy, he's gonna be a police officer for us, uh, so we're excited about that. Um, but, uh, we had talked about looking to sell that facility, so, uh, we're gonna continue to line that up. It will come back to you before we decide to make anything official, um, but that's the direction I'm taking it. So if there's any concern with that, I'd love to hear it. If not, we'll keep progressing for that. Okay. Um, and then you see various project updates, but I'll stop there if there's any questions.
You think the Arizona Trail is really gonna happen?
Yeah, it's back to C dot.
Yeah.
Back to C dot.
Yeah.
Um, be great. Yep.
Yeah, they've got, they're gathering some more info right now, Olson Engineering, but even C dot sent an email out to Olson, hey, we're looking on this, so.
You know, could, could it happen before April?
No.
I could take credit.
Oh. You're going in it?
The cost is going up.
Oh, again?
Cost is going up.
Sure.
Uh, on the construction estimate. So in the budget discussions.
We'll talk about. Talk about it.
That increase essentially on balance and in our, some of our really.
Seems like that was my second or third meeting.
Right. We're, we are setting a record. Longest C dot project.
So like, for the state.
Yeah.
We'll get a, we'll get a badge for that.
This is mean hot topic with the trails.
Yeah, Lois, Lois probably, gotcha, yeah.
Wants to happen.
We do too.
No doubt.
Uh, water master plan is, is, that's probably the most exciting thing out of that whole thing. Uh, we're, we're very thrilled with the draft that we have right now. That's, that will be coming in September timeframe as well. Um, but that's gonna be a good, very, very good plan, water plan that we're gonna be able to take some action from, so.
That's it, any questions? I, you know, and I, I will just make a comment, Gina came in at a great time. There's some big stuff going on.
Yeah, Marauder moment.
I mean, we have some quick meetings, but there's some big stuff, this water treat, this plan coming in, I mean, uh, and unfortunately SDRs, but you know, there's a lot going on and and you're gonna be impressed, that's all I.
I'm excited.
Next, that's it, Philip?
That's it.
Else for Philip? Again, Michelle?
Um, basically, the report has the actual numbers for the sales tax and, uh, the, the breakdown of, uh, remote versus in town. And, and then the large check checks over two thousand dollar listing. Um, I have to say, one of the advantages of having the quarterly report so late is that the whole quarter sales tax shows, so we got to see June when the quarterly report was supposed to be done a, a couple of weeks ago. It wouldn't have had June on there, so I, I don't know if you want to change the timing on that so that so that my quarterly reports come a little later, so you can see a full reporting of the quarter. Um, other than that, I'll take questions.
Uh, questions for Michelle?
I found the ranch on page one fifty seven. Towards the bottom of the page.
And, and Michelle, I'm gonna say you have total control when that quarterly report comes out. Just say it, I like the idea of a full quarter.
Yeah, I do too.
Yeah, uh, you know, why not?
Okay. I can certainly, um, delay the quarterly report for another couple of weeks, and that way we'll have a full view of what the quarter looks like.
Great. And it sounds like we're gonna hear a whole lot from you in a couple of weeks.
Yes.
Budget kick.
It's budget season or audit season, then budget season, then.
Okay, thank you, principal planner, Mark Doring.
Yes, my staff orders out, if what's a three and what's a four in your pocket, I'm not gonna talk about those, I am gonna mention a little blip on the radar. Um, the entirety of staff, including our new hire, will be out the week of uh, will be out September eighth, ninth and tenth, that's Wednesday, Thursday and Friday. We will be at the Colorado Planning Association Conference, so we will be talking with all the other planners in this uh, state at our conference. So that also will include two planning commission, so the sixth, for those of you not paying attention, is Labor Day, so staff will be in basically Tuesday that week.
That's it, short week.
Sunday week.
That'd be great, Joseph, to walk right into it.
Yeah.
That's, that's just.
That's roadie.
I am, but you know. Um, and there's your thirty nine number.
I wanna.
Maybe throw in there compared last year if you get a chance on, uh, a single family permits.
Yes, I, if I can certainly do that as we move on, but.
And no worries.
Things tend to be a little bit different. We, for example, we didn't get many permits in July, but we got a bunch in August that. The number we really focus on is at the end of the year.
Cool, that's perfect. Um, thank you, Mark. Sean?
Sean? What question for Mark too? Are they gonna tear down that little brothel? Are they just building on the sides of it?
Everybody perked up, say that again?
Yeah.
So, we have had discussions about a potential application on that property. And we have had an actual application of the Historic Preservation Commission with respect to, uh, alteration or demolition. The Historic Preservation Commission heard some conversations about additions to that structure because they are proposing to build on both sides, covering up some windows and doors of the existing building. They're not proposing to demolish the entire
Okay.
structure.
Yeah.
They're proposing to add, which changes the existing structure, which the Historic Preservation Commission heard. But that is not a formal application at this time.
Yeah.
Hearsay.
Yeah.
It's all hearsay.
Yeah, it was in the packet.
Oh.
I mean.
It's still hearsay. Okay. Is that good?
Thank you.
That would be interesting if that happened. Historic Preservation Squad. If they tear it down.
Look at that.
On account of our water.
Um, okay, Public Works, Sean?
Thank you, Mayor, thank you, trustee. There are no typos on my report. I checked my mouth for like twenty five minutes, so I don't expect the unaccounted to last, but it's it's a good sight to see. It's, I've never seen it that low, so.
Five percent.
Get on the water department, that, that leak that we found in June definitely had an impact on it. I do think that some of our meters rolling had a little bit of help to do with it too. Anyways, yeah, we'll try to keep it down there as long as we can. Uh, um, you know, a diatom is a single cell form of algae, um, just so you guys know what that is, and that's in the, uh, water plant pilot study update. So we were trying to run some, uh, filters with surface water and the, uh, looks like the, the, um, small clay particles in the diatoms were fouling it, so it's giving us some better information on, on how to approach the surface water plant, if that's a direction that we plan to go for or our water rights, um, acquisition into our infrastructure. Um, this is some opportunities to, to share with you when the reports come. Um, had to modify the, uh, the milestone timeline for the water plant expansion project. It puts us back a little bit, but only a couple of months. We just have a lot of things that we're trying to get dialed in right now, so you know, the, uh, due diligence efforts that we're putting in right now, trying to analyze the, the, the water and the, and the the clay and the diatoms that are, and things like that, so, um, I think construction day maybe gets pushed back two months with this schedule um, on this milestone, so, but, yeah, we need to get going. Um, TPHG is gonna wanna see the, uh, project needs assessment and environmental assessment assessment coming up pretty, pretty quick. Um, we got, uh, some good paved roads this year, we got a few things to work on, whether it was staff or whether it was the double chip application on uh, three sections of our chip seal project, just didn't take, A1's coming back to resolve that, so I'll see them in the next couple of weeks to do that, um, do that work. Yeah, getting ready for the C dot sidewalk project, beginning in September, hopefully September first, that's the day we're planning on getting out there and doing the demo, demo work on that, and, um, yeah, um, some developments are going good and some developments are, uh, are a little labor intrusive, but I think for all being then, if you have any questions, happy to answer them.
People seem happy about the paving.
Pardon me?
People seem happy about the paving.
Yeah, all in all, it went pretty good, you know, you know, subgrade prep is the key for everything. Um, it's a little frustrating, I always expect the chip seal to look smoother than it does. And, uh, you know, all I focus are, are on the imperfection, so all in all, those guys do. The, uh, the paving that was, um, provided by, uh, S and S, um, they, he did a really good job and um, yeah, big thank you for helping making, make all this happen with their product and their prices.
And, and those kind of things like striping, they show big. You know, I mean, everybody notices that. It's like, wow, look, we striped roads, we, you know, parking's all there.
Yeah.
Those kind of things carry a lot of weight. Anything else for Sean? It's interesting to see phase eight Sunset Vista, that just boggles your mind.
Wow, yeah.
Boggles your mind. Thank you, Sean.
Bet, thank you.
Jack?
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, trustees, uh, try to keep it short, my report is on page one seven nine, once, or one seven eight, one seven nine. Staffing wise, I'll be out of the office, uh, the week before Labor Day holidays, take some time off, spend with the family. Uh, we're looking at maybe hiring a, a, a line tech, so more to follow on that. Um, hats barbecue and our flying, so I'd like to thank everybody for showing up and helping us and supporting that, that was a great event. We did quite well on the hats, I think we sold over five hundred gallons of fuel, we had probably a hundred and thirty folks out here and ate everything we had. So it was a, a lot of fun for the hats, and then we followed that right up with the, uh, fly in. So we haven't had a fly in for quite a while, and, uh, I think it was quite a success, we had quite. So we haven't had a fly-in for quite a while, and uh, I think it was quite a success. We had quite a number of planes, a lot of vintage cars. I think we had over probably a hundred and thirty or three hundred fifty people here, thirty, forty aircraft. So it was a, it was a very fun afternoon. Um, operation wise, Leonardo Boeing slash US Air Force is still planning a coming, uh, Boeing has sent their um, lease agreement for signing. We haven't confirmed dates there, but I'm I'm still betting that they're coming. Uh, we've got another FAA airport grant. We we submitted for for thirty-two thousand, so that's going through the system. And along that line with FAA and C dot, we're starting to discuss the twenty-two, twenty-three uh, apron rehab projects. We've had a couple of meetings. So there'll be more to fall on that. Um, so those are the two back-to-back six hundred thousand grants from the FAA. We'll be doing for the next two summers. Equipment wise, we're doing well. Uh, operations, you can see the chart, uh, we're we're pretty much up everywhere. We're a little bit down on personnel, airport and helo ops. And again, that's really just because we have, we haven't had the testing yet. Uh, this time last year, we had testing. We had a lot more hats activity. But we're still up on aircraft activity overall and same with uh, our Jet A fuel year date. We're up a little bit down again in Ju- July from last year, again, because of no testing. But if we get that testing, we'll be well on our way. Well, that's, I'm thinking that's pretty much it. Uh, drag it up. You can see all the numbers and percentages there. You can read and see where we're up and where we're down. If you have any questions, be more than happy to entertain.
Questions for Jack? Thank you, Jack, and the barbecue was great.
Great, thanks for coming out, Mr. Mayor.
Next item is staff interaction. Mark?
Thank you.
Sean?
Man, I'm slow on that mute button. No, just real quick, on Karen Dill's comments in regards to the thistle in the gallery. Just one of those things, um, it's it's a, it's a battle. We're we're slowly losing it. Um, it's uh, something that we're focused on as well as other areas in town, so um, we'll uh, we'll be looking for solutions. Um, the methods we've been using, you know, since I've been working here. It's all, it's all handwork and mitigation, whacking and digging and cutting and removing and things like that, just because it's such a sensitive area. Um, but anyways, I appreciate her 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 comments on it. It's um, it's something that is uh, high of all importance to to me as well.
Thank you, Sean. I won't make a comment. Joel? Joel, just pray it, Sean.
I have nothing.
You have nothing? Okay.
Thank you.
Couldn't help it. I know. You know, they got you spill it.
Oh, um, yeah, let's see. Usually gets me last. Um, I just a heads up, uh, it's the board that that uh, another September thing. Uh, I would, I just give a heads up to expect an annexation petition coming from Tribe View, probably in that timeframe. Um, and then I think as I alerted the board, uh, they did sign uh, sign a contract for the master planning out at the rodeo grounds and that and that property, and that is uh, planned to be kicked off in September as well. So that's coming.
Um, no idea when though.
No.
Nothing. Cause I'm looking at the uh, agenda. And it looks, I mean, when I look at it, well, you and I can talk about it. It's fairly light right now.
It's about to not be, right?
Oh, well, I'm just going, you know, maybe we can squeeze something with the short-term rental thing if you guys have time. I mean, I'm not gonna push staff. I will, I will talk. We'll just talk about it.
Uh, just kudos to staff. Um, a lot of effort, and I appreciate the board recognizing that tonight. A lot of, a lot of work went into that. Um, thank you, Joel, for uh, carrying that presentation. That was very well done. And I think we'll land somewhere that makes a lot of sense. I appreciate the board balancing a lot of public input, and there's been a lot of public input before tonight. So good, good job to you all.
And it's in, and thank you, and I agree, staff's put a lot of time in this. And so, and the board's made some good decent comments, stuff like that. Uh, always keep in mind, you're never gonna please everybody, no matter what you do. Thank you, Dave.
Yeah.
Stumped you too.
Me too, yeah. And maybe we could talk about it when we have more brain space, or maybe it's terribly insignificant. But I was surprised to see draft minutes in our packet. They years ago caused a big stir when we asked for draft minutes, so.
Doug spent all of Thursday doing that, so.
That was tough there.
It
Because it was back-to-back.
Just in the interest of trying to keep things.
I get the import. It just just surprised me. I mean, it was, it was a big deal a long time ago.
And it will be again, believe me. But it was nice to see.
Yeah, 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 very, very useful.
Yeah, tell him thank you very much. It was uh, it it makes a big difference.
Thank you very much for that.
Uh, Jack?
Uh, not much. Again, thanks very much for all your support, folks, coming out and visiting us for our events. Uh, have a great evening.
Thank you, Jack. Did Earl go home?
Yep.
Good. Devin?
What's your order?
I don't have one, man.
Random.
Uh.
Super ball.
I'm good. I just welcome Gina to the board and feel free to reach out if you have any questions about anything like reading a packet or it's taking hours to do packets.
How long do you take you to?
I can do it pretty quick.
Ten minutes?
Yeah.
Only a hundred and eighty pages.
Yeah, it's only a hundred and eighty.
How many times do we get told that tonight?
It is three hundred.
Couple times.
And is that?
Get this on Friday. Can't read this.
We've had a larger than that.
Never mind.
Since we have one that big.
It's the, you know, financial stuff. It's flip through that.
Oh, that's right.
It's that part.
Yeah.
Or what do you got?
Nothing.
Nothing. Libby?
Welcome, Gina.
Yeah.
Glad to have you on.
Well, I got Dave's name on here twice. You have it now, Dave?
Uh, even less than last time.
Okay, great. Okay, Cindy?
Welcome. I've been up since four. I'm ready to go home.
Well, you're not since going to bed now.
Yeah. I'll get up in a few hours anyway.
I gotta go work. It's, or I got work to do, let me put it that way.
Just a reminder, we have a couple of CML conferences coming up. If you want to attend, let me know to RSVP. We have the CML conference, September twenty-second and twenty-fourth in Westminster. I need an RSVP by August twenty-fifth on that one, and also our District Thirteen conferences in Brockville on September fifteenth. So if anybody wants to do a road trip there. Also, I know I had put yesterday was the cutoff for intergovernmental meeting down in Salida. We could probably wiggle room that if anybody who didn't have a chance to RSVP to let me know. I've heard, you know, from Duff, Devin, and Cindy.
I'd like to go, I think.
Libby would like to go.
I wonder where the county's gonna have it? Italian restaurants closing.
Yeah, I know.
The governmental meeting is August.
Fancy.
No, for sure later. Sure.
That one will need to know, um, probably in the next days.
Oh. Okay.
You all good, Paul?
That's it, hey.
Good, very good. Michelle?
I'm snoring.
I know you weren't on mute.
I'm good, thank you.
Thank you. Jeff, do you have anything you want to add?
No, I don't. Thanks very much.
All right, thank you, Jeff. Gina, last but not least, what did you think?
I just appreciate the opportunity to be here with all of you, so thank you very much for this opportunity and the forward to doing the best I can, learning from all of you and helping to lead and reflect the voices of the town. So thank you.
Great, and we'll try not to do this regularly.
This is the latest.
Yeah.
When I started, it was, I don't know, Joel, it was probably what?
We passed midnight.
Yeah. Uh, and pretty much every meeting.
Ever boring.
Good time.
Yes.
Recognized donations that were donation towards the
Oh.
initiate structure.
Um, I did.
Oh, yeah.
I did two letters, correct?
Yeah. Does that mean it's happening?
We had from the Buena Vista Chamber of Commerce.
Oh, cool. I get.
And this is for the structure at the McDonald me Park. Both of these are correct, and the same comes from the Bu- uh, Buena Vista Event Cooperative. In uh, cover, shaded cover in the park. Very cool. Um, I have nothing else. I didn't entertain a motion. Okay. Did we have Nyberg?
Yeah.
Oh, it was row. Wow, oh, row jumped in. Uh, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Thank you very much. Have a good night.
Yay, yay.
Thank you all. Take care.